Welcome, everybody. Thank you for attending tonight. Would you please rise for the invocation and then stay standing for the pledge of allegiance? Do we have a flag? Face east, okay, we'll face east. Let's do the invocation first.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings for this community that we call home. We come together tonight as elected officials to inform and discuss our progress and plans for our remarkable school district and our city. Guide us in our decisions and help us rise to the tasks ahead of us. As we focus on our duty to our community, may we share our commitment with our neighbors. Amen.
All right, again, thank you and welcome, everyone. First thing I'm going to do is call this the City of Lee Summit, our agenda and our meeting to order. I'm calling to order the joint session with LSR 7, regular session number 27. And with that, I would need a roll call. Ms. Fowler-Akuri.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor. Councilmember Shields. Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell. Councilmember Edson. Mayor Protim Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Summit School Board, Board President Campbell. Vice Board President Fritchie.
Here.
Board Member Sparks.
Here.
Board Member Murdock.
Here.
Board Member Eslick. Board Member Foley. And we will also note that Superintendent David Buck and the Board Secretary Linda Ismer are both here, too.
Wonderful, thank you. A couple of items before we get started. We need to do an approval of the agenda by the council. Could I get a motion? Councilmember Shields? Have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker? Councilmember DeMaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell? Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Councilmember Edson.
Councilmember Edson.
Would you go ahead and do the school board?
We'll need a motion. Can I get a motion in a second to approve our agenda, please?
I move to present, to accept our agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Ismer, can you do the roll call? Board Member Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks? Board Member Eslick?
Aye.
Board Member Foley? President Campbell? Aye. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The City of Lee Summit has approval of a consent agenda that I would need a motion for.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? All right, I need one more roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeMaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson? Councilmember Pryor? Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges? Councilmember Lovell? Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. All right, thank you. That takes us to council roundtable. So this, for council, we do a roundtable at the beginning, which is items of general interest, things going on in your district. Anything, anything of interest. Usually if, if nobody has anything, then we talk about if it's going to snow or not. It's supposed to snow tonight, so. Only one to three inches, so you shouldn't have too tough of a call. Or is it, is it harder when it's at? Supposed to. At least we're preparing for snow as a city, so. Okay, well, then, before we get started, I was just going to say why we're here tonight. This is the third meeting, I think, in the last few years. I think we, only one we missed was during COVID. But otherwise, it'd be the fourth meeting in recent years, where we come together to share our organizational values and strengthen our relationship between organizations, the City of Lee Summit and the school district, but also between the council and the board. And I'm just a big advocate of us having open lines of communication between elected officials. And so I thank you so much for, for participating. We do share many of the same citizens, of course, and we definitely share the same brand. And there's no doubt that the tremendous growth of the city over the last 30 to 40 years has in large part been, been due to the great demand for our award-winning school district. So we absolutely are proud of that. We also want to say that we have a symbiotic or symbiotic relationship, where it's mutually beneficial for us to work together, to support each other, to help each other. And I just like having this joint meeting each year to allow us to voice our support for the school district and to build and sustain a great relationship. And if you look at the list tonight of things that we can collaborate on, it's really grown over the years. We've also had success doing this with the parks and the city council, because we actually are under two different charters, and then also the planning commission, which is one of our committees. But we come together this way and just try to get all on the same page. So it's really productive, so thank you again, and I will let President Campbell say anything.
I just, Mayor Baird, thank you for the opportunity. Agree that it is a great relationship and building that relationship is very important, what the, what the district does for the city, as well as what the city reaches out and, and works with us on as well. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Then we will dive into some business. I think the first order, if I go by the agenda, my council has to keep me on the agenda. I like to get ahead. Are there any public comments, Ms. Fowler-Akuri? All right, well, then, the first item on the agenda is the state of the district for the Board of Education. It looks like Dr. Buck is going to take the, take the lead on this.
All right, is this on? It is on. Okay, I'm going to take this off here so I can move, because standing behind a podium is not my favorite thing. But I want to echo the sentiment just shared, the great partnerships we have. There's a lot of people in the stands back here, from the city, from the fire department, police department, we have a fantastic relationship with, for the betterment of our community, for our staff, for our kids, so we appreciate that. We're going to give a little bit of a district address update, if you will, and we're going to have three of us do that. So we're going to seesaw between President Campbell and I, and then Dr. Shelton will come up and share some bond issue of the updates, where we are with the 2020 bond. And that will probably actually be the largest piece of presentation we do all night, because we want to share where we're at, because things are wrapping up in a lot of ways, and there's a few things starting, but we've done a lot of things lately. So our purpose today, we're going to share a purpose, and then President Campbell's going to share board priorities. I'm going to go through some stats, if you know me, I'm a data guy, and then what's new, and then we'll do that bond update, okay? So our purpose, it's, it's behind our head every time we're at the dais over down the road here, is preparing each student for success in life. And I'll add this, and Dr. Shelton's actually has this as a, as a purpose or mission statement, if you will, for operations, is that we do this by supporting and serving our students, staff, and community with integrity and care. We have 2,973 employees, we have nearly 18,000 students when you count pre-K, we have 102,000 patrons we serve, and we take it very seriously. And we're happy that we're one of the lighthouse districts in the state, and we want to keep it that way, and we thank everyone for their support in that. So President Campbell's going to talk a little bit about board priorities. You got, you want me to put it back in the sand? Yep, and I'll steal it back off the stand when you're done.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. So as a district, Dr. Buck just shared our mission. We prepare each student for success in life. And as a board, annually, we also meet and set our board priorities. And that's really the strategic direction that we're setting for the district and asking, asking Dr. Buck and staff then to carry forward with those board priorities. So I just wanted to share a little bit about that with everybody tonight. It really goes hand in hand with our comprehensive student improvement plan, the C-SIP, as well as a few other strategic plans that we use within the district. And I really love this graphic, because we struggled a little bit as a board and with some community questions on, well, what's the priority of your priorities? Which one comes first? Which one comes second? And which one comes third? And our Board Secretary Linda Ismer provided us with this graphic to really show how intricately linked our board priorities are. So they're not in sequential order, they all work together and link together across the district. And so as we walk through these, I'll share the board priority, and then I'll share a little bit of the work that aligns with that board priority that we're so excited and proud of. So we definitely see on the left, increase the achievement of every child through a focus on innovative practices, student well-being, and enhanced accessibility to educational opportunities. We see the significant teamwork and collaboration across the district with state-of-the-art facilities. This year, we opened our new middle school, renovations across the district. Thank you to our voters, and thank you to Dr. Shelton and his team for the focus on how the buildings, the spaces, the furniture, and the technology all work together to feed our students' learning. And the creation this year also of the Long Range Capital Plan, providing us with that vision, taking us out five years, 10 years, 20 years into what those learning spaces will look like for our students. That also goes hand in hand with Dr. Barger and her organization's work with innovative curriculum, instructional focus, and the professional development for our staff. We see that rigor in learning in the programs that we offer through the AP and the IB courses that are offered, the Avid program in our high schools, providing additional supports for our college-bound students. And then those rigorous courses, providing engineering learning, robotics, healthcare, aviation programs, all the things that set our students apart and advance them in their learning as they take those next steps after LSR 7. Our real-world learning with Explore at the elementary level. What do I like? What are my strengths? Ignite, as our students move into middle school, with the curriculum that helps our students see themselves in different themes and career possibilities. And at the high school level, with those real experiences, doing actual projects, working with companies around the city to implement their projects. Also, looking at courses, like our construction geometry, different trade courses that we're looking at, building internships and pipelines, whether it's college-bound or career-bound, for our students, helping them imagine what their future can be. We see this also in MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, data-driven student dashboards that help our staff identify supports that will help our students benefit and drive their success. We see it in the implementation of our student mental health services in our buildings with RAREL services, continuing to advance that and have that mental health services in every single building for all of our students. On the far right, you'll see the board priority. Meet each student where they are by utilizing an equity lens in all decisions, actions, practices, and resource support. It all starts with belonging. And seeing our D-teams continuing from the district level, and now that training and rollout of the D-teams and their plans at the building level in every building of our district. Meeting each student where they are to ensure the access for what's needed for them to be successful. We see this in so many ways. Again, MTSS and that linkage with our first priority. And the challenge going out to our administrative teams in buildings to see how they could increase engagement in activities, clubs, athletics, for all of our students, looking for ways to remove barriers for participation, and again, building that sense of belonging. A few more examples, the choose-to-include-with-the-special-Olympics event, the implementation of a new evaluation tool for our gifted students, a struggling readers' parent group, and approval of our activities and athletics strategic plan. And the board continues to work hard here as well. This year, we worked with the MSBA on an equity toolkit, completing that as a board and actually presenting at the MSBA conference. And then right here in the middle, we see strengthening communication that builds engagement, collaboration, confidence with both internal and external district stakeholders. Internally, this year, we had the first convocation that included all of our staff, and had the marching bands from all three high schools and our stepper groups as well, with the theme of the power of public education. That was an exciting morning, I can tell you. And we know that Dr. Buck has teams that he meets with internally as well, at the leadership level, at the administrative level, a student group, as well as a group of teachers. And he has all the folks at the Stanbury Leadership Center, including himself, out in the buildings every week, working with all of those building participants as well. Externally, we've continued to engage with participation around our CAC and Business Roundtable, strong partnerships, as Mayor Baird mentioned, with the City of Lee Summit and our chamber, and our legislators at the state level. And this year, Dr. Buck has led a few new initiatives that we're really proud of, providing a Parents Academy for parents in our district to learn more about the district, a Realtor Breakfast, inviting in Realtors to learn more about our district, and the Lee Summit Educational Foundation Community Breakfast. Katie Bergen's PR team has also implemented so many avenues to share information out with our community, students, and parents, podcasts, webinars, a magazine, and different email communications as well. We're also continuing to look for communication tools and ways to engage with our community, to make it easier and to have more ongoing engagement for that inbound communication so that we can be good listeners as well. So we've got a lot of exciting work to do, and I wanted to take a moment to just pause, share some of our strategic priorities, and tie in the hard work that goes into educating our students every day. Thank you. Dr. Buck, I'll turn it back over to you.
So with that, we have some staff members in the, in the crowd here. So if you're a Lee Summit staff member in the crowd, you stand, so I can put some names to faces for, for the city council members. So Dr. Steve Shelton is the Associate Superintendent of Operations, and his counterpart then on the academic side is Dr. Kristi Barger. So they're, they're the two that kind of lead those two different houses. Nathan Holder is in charge of, the CFO, in charge of finances, and he's a former superintendent. Dr. Carlson's in charge of HR, and then behind him, you're going to hear Jeremy Bonnison a little bit, who runs this building, is principal of this building. So we'll hear from some of those folks in a little bit, but I want to put names to faces. If any city council member ever wants to get a tour of a building, please let us know, reach out, we'd be happy to give you a tour. I know we have a legislative day in the, in the fall, and some of you were able to make that, and you got to go to East Trails. We had that last year as well, but if you have a building and want to go take a tour and learn more about, please do so, including this building, where you have 33 different high schools coming to right here. Not only do you have 33 high schools coming here, the kids work with people across the world from this building. It's a pretty impressive program that nobody else in the state of Missouri has, so much so that Governor has already been here three times in the last, I think, 18 months. The National FAA Administrator Dixon, he came here. So we have some people come through this, because this is such a unique place. So I encourage you, if you want to go to our oldest elementary that's building-wise, 1910 Greenwood Elementary, or you want to see our newest facility, which is about five, six months old now, East Trails Middle School, we'd be happy to give you a tour and show some programming, because it is pretty impressive. I thought it might be wise to share some data with you, so you can kind of get scopes of things. So we have 17,783 students. 20 years ago, that was mid-14,000. I want you to remember that change, that's about 3,300 kids. And I want you to remember that number, okay? Because in here, the second I'm going to refer to that. We're the sixth-largest school district, not this year, but the previous year, we passed St. Louis Public Schools. 2.1% of all kids in the entire state of Missouri go to school district in Lee Summit. 2.1% of all students in the state. So one out of 50 kids in the entire state goes to school, goes to school right here in this district. We are at 19.8% of our students qualify for free reduced lunch. 20 years ago, that was of 7%. So remember, I said we've grown 3,300 over the last 20 years, but we've grown 2,500 in free reduced lunch. Our need is getting greater. We often think about, hey, we don't have many needs here. We have 3,500 kids whose families are underemployed. That's why we're a big believer in economic development, big believer in partnering with 260 businesses in our community. We're a big believer in that, because not only do we want to help create jobs for our kids in the future and help them get skills to do so, but we also want to have their parents be gainfully employed, because that makes an impact on their education and their learning. 10.1% of kids qualify for an IEP, that's about the same as it was 20 years ago. And believe it or not, we're more male than female. I don't know why, when you get that big a number, you think it'd be exactly 50%, but it's not. I thought that was kind of interesting. 33.1% of our kids identify as non-white, that's quite a bit of difference than 20 years ago, it was 9%. I know when you've seen probably city stats and the city lemons, and our borders don't exactly match, you probably don't see 33%. Young people are more diverse than our whole population, all right? So we are 33, so one out of three kids is, fits in a demographic that would be considered a minority. We have 710 acres, 3.5 million square feet of facilities, 2.6 million square feet of roofing, because sometimes we have two stories, like in this building. We have 28 acres of asphalt playgrounds. Total, we're just shy of 100 acres of asphalt. And we have 82 acres of athletic fields. We only have 19 acres that does not have a facility on it, and that's up in Chapman Farms for a future elementary. So that's all we have as far as future growth right now, is we have 19 acres in Chapman Farms. Where does funding come from? Revenue sources come from? By and large, it comes from our citizens here in Lee Summit. The state averages around 50% of their funding coming from the state level, the districts across state of Missouri. We're down less than 30%, and that blue chart is getting smaller and smaller every single year. Okay, so we're relying less and less on the state, relying more and more on local. Where does our funding go? 84%, 84.2% goes to salary and benefits. That is the most, the highest percent of the Big Six. The Big Six or the districts above 10,000. I do take Kansas City out of there, they would be a seventh, but they have a charter public school system, and there's some weird things that happen. Actually, they would have the lowest number on here, because they spend a lot on transportation, my buses pass each other and things like that. They also have the courts set their tax rate instead of the state auditor's office formula, so. But there, there you have it. We're, we are, we send our money to classrooms at higher rates than anybody else. We're also the leanest out of these groups. And I don't know why it's saying that. I hope this doesn't restart, Linda, we'll see. My computer is doing that over there, too. So this, this is tax rates over the last 10 years. Let's see if I can get rid of that, it won't get rid of that? Yeah, try to hit snooze on mine, it wouldn't do that either. Well, we'll see what happens here. All right, we got eight minutes, we'll see how fast we go, or 14 minutes. So you can see tax rates over the last 10 years, our tax rate has dropped over time. So our tax rate is lower than it was quite a bit of time ago. Let's do that, there we go. And then I got to click on the slide to get back to the slide. And then if I look at the Big Six, our tax rate's the lowest of the Big Six. So all those districts that have 10,000 or more have a significantly higher tax rate than us. So again, we, our citizens are paying a lower tax rate than they did before, and we're the lowest of our neighbors. Okay? So we are very fiscally responsible and lean. If you look at the entire metro area, we spend less percent on administrative costs, which includes secretaries and administrators and copy machines and such, than any of the other districts in the entire metro area, regardless of size. We have 33% reserve, so we're, we're healthy in that respect. Since we rely on local, that number needs to be higher than, say, if you're relying on the state, because the state makes equal payments all 12 months. We know local taxes come in when you pay your property tax at the end of the year. So we have to make sure we have enough money to make payroll in December and not have to borrow, and then funding comes in. So we're halfway through the year when a good portion of our funding comes in. This is an interesting stat, I do appreciate, and I've told Governor Parsons this, I really appreciate the call for increased teacher wages. Here's what I'm going to tell you, the state budget, they changed the formula about seven years ago. So last six years, we've averaged 0.6% increase in payments, 0.6.1%, or 0.61% increase. So that's not keeping up inflation before high inflation times, let alone anything else. This year, right now, we're at 21% increase for electricity. Last year, we were a 7.9% increase over the prior year. And we just go over and over, food and fuel and everything else, everything's going up much higher than what the state's increasing for us. So that's one of the reasons why we're relying more and more on local. We spend 3.3 million a year on electric, thank you, Evergy. We spend 697,000 on gas, I thought it's going to be much higher this year. We looked quite a bit higher. We spend 483,000 on water sewer. And we have 2,973 employees, the largest employer in the district, two-thirds of which live here in our district. We have over 26,000 devices, and here in about a week, that'll increase by another 10,000. We have 160 servers. Look at all those wireless access points. We have 110 miles of fiber, and that's about 20 years old. We don't really know how long that'll last, so that's kind of something we pay attention to. It's working great now, but at some point, we'll have to replace 110 miles of fiber. We drive almost 10,300 miles on a bus every single day just for bus routes. That doesn't count sporting events, field trips, or anything else. So every single day, we're transporting about 12,000 kids, and it takes over 10,000 miles. All right, that's quite a few miles, all right? We, we are the second-largest ridership a few years ago, I haven't seen the stats lately in the entire state. We have 347 routes to the AM. We serve 1.7 billion meals a year. I think in September, we served just over 200,000. So that's breakfasts and lunches. And you might hear the, the national talk of scores are down, scores are not down here in Lee Summit. Our scores are up, our state scores are up, our local scores are up, and our ACT scores are up. At the same time, you're seeing state and national scores go down. So I want to put that Mythbuster out there, our scores are going up. I know there's a lot of national narrative about the pandemic effect, and that is very real, don't get me wrong, but our scores are going up. So we're happy about that. 73% of our graduates earned a market value asset. So this is a metro area push, both sides of the state line. The Kaufman Foundation kind of helped start this maybe four years ago, working with a lot of area businesses and chambers, and the idea is that every kid walks out with more than a diploma. They walk out with either a certain level of college credit hours, an internship, or they did a client-connected project, or they could pass an industry-recognized certificate, so think of welding, things like that. So they got a leg up, they got more in their resume than just a diploma. Our goal is to get 100%, okay? And so we're very excited about that, and we're so thankful for the 260 businesses that partner with us in that respect. New and upcoming, so some of these are already here, some of them are about here. So Amped Up Algebra, that's here. As a student, some of you probably took algebra. Well, some kids learned very well book-wise, some have a harder time with book-wise, because it's too abstract. So we have it partnered with a business class, and we'll see how this works here. Linda, you might have to come up with that one. So I'll explain this part. What that works like, they have a business class attached to it, so they have two classes back to back, and they run a business. So they have a screen-printed business, they design skateboards, things like that, and they learn the exact same algebra functions as they would in a traditional algebra class, okay? And exciting news is our test scores on NWA, Dr. Barger, correct me if I'm wrong, are actually higher in those scores than they were in traditional. And this is the first year we've done it, so we're pretty excited. The second one listed, you cannot see right now, is Construction, Geometry and Construction. This starts next fall. We have, and you're going to hear about the bond issue part of this from Dr. Shelton in a few minutes. We're going to have at each one of our high schools, a facility that you can either take geometry in a classroom, like you traditionally do, and that's probably the most abstract math, or you can learn the same concepts, but you'll be in a shop setting, and you'll be building sheds, maybe even tiny houses, things like that. So you'll learn the exact same things, but it'll be hands-on. So we're trying to honor the fact that, A, we need more kids to be interested in trade, and B, we also know not all kids learn the same way. The trade piece is interesting, because every kid thinks they want to do a computer, all right? And that's great, we need people to know how to work in technology, like we have right now, behind me. That being said, I think less and less kids have an opportunity to have their hands-on things. So one of them is farther down there, you see that U-Build? This rolls out in March. We bought a trailer, and Lee Summit North Shop classes are helping us out, we're coming up with ready-made projects. We're going to go to every single elementary, and kids are going to come out and put together things, use some tools, because less and less kids have access to tools that, you know, that maybe some of us had when we were younger, and so they don't know whether they like that or not. So we're trying to expose them before they start making middle school choices, the classes where they could actually be in some shop areas. And if you ever want to come to East Trails, for example, we stopped in their shop area, you'll be amazed. You'll be jealous of it. Grow Your Own Teacher Program. We have 22 freshmen in college. I think we have 27 in it right now this year as high schoolers, seniors. That's been fantastic. Those kids are in college, came back for a PD day here over the break, winter break, and it was absolutely amazing to hear them talk about their college experience compared to everyone else who didn't come through this program, and how much farther ahead they are. So I can't thank the board enough for partnering with us on that. We have a parrot teacher program. It's a partnership with University of Central Missouri. We have a lot of higher ed partnerships. We have a lot of private school partnerships. We're open to think differently. We're not trying to repeat the old, old way of doing things. If it benefits kids, we're interested. Aerospace Academy, you're gonna hear a little bit about that, maybe as an example, Dr. Bonnison? I don't know? Yes, okay, so I'll skip that one. Hospitality Program, we'll talk about, and Environmental Education is a different agenda item. Registered Youth Apprenticeship. There's only about, I don't know, 15 of them in the state, so we're one of those, and that allows a kid to get college, our high school credit, at the same time they're getting paid at a job with embedded curriculum in it. So give you an example, if a kid was working in a, for part of the day of school day, they would go work, say they wanted to do auto collision, go work at a car dealership fixing cars, they're getting high school credit, and they're getting certifications, and that accelerates their pay. We have a great partnership with JCI, making water pumps, and they actually send two staff members to our high schools one day a week, and actually train kids in the classroom, as well as have registered youth apprenticeships in their, in their facility. So that's a fantastic partnership. And we've explored things with the fire department on a potential fire academy. We know they hired, I think, 28 people the prior year. We'd like to be part of that pipeline, so. Completed projects, bond projects, we're gonna talk about what's completed, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about what is underway. So this is Dr. Steve Shelton.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Good evening, everyone. I just want to reiterate something that President Campbell started with about the interwoven nature of the work that we do. What I'm gonna talk about here in just a few minutes is the bond, are the bond projects, the capital improvement that we have undertaken over the last couple of years, and we're continuing in the next few years ahead of us. But all of that work is done with the purpose of increasing student achievement, increasing the effectiveness of the staff and the work that they do. It's not necessarily because we want the biggest, beautiful, most beautiful buildings, you know, that's nice, and those facilities are wonderful to look at and have in our community. But at the end of the day, the most important aspect that we're trying to enhance is that educational experience for our students, the work of our staff, and of course, the opportunity for our community to use these facilities as well. Also, I just want to reiterate something that's been said earlier as well, the partnership, the partnership that exists. I mean, we don't, you don't do the type of work that we've been doing on our facilities without the help of the city, without that partnership with the cities. We talk about the Planning Commission, the staff at the city who help us, Mark and Ryan and, and all the staff. You know, the work that we've done is very complex, very comprehensive, and it takes a lot of work, and a lot of, lot of teamwork among the city and the school district and our contractors. So you know, in 2020, the voters passed $224 million bond issuance. We went out to market, and you know, given the state of the market at that time, we were able to turn that 224 million into 260 million with premium bonds. And also with the investment opportunities that we've had, we've been able to add another 1 to 2 million on top of that. So as we sit here today, we have about 260, 61, 262 million dollars to spend on improving our facilities. And what we've done so far, as you know, Mason Elementary, significant work there, 16.6 million dollars worth of improvements, additions made. And as you think about the work that we're doing, we're, we are doing the type of work where we clean up and renovate and, and give a facelift, but more importantly, we're reimagining what this space looks like for our students and our staff. And when you think about what schools looked like in the 60s and 70s and 80s, you know, when I was in school, or you go into the 90s and 2000s, when, when really Lee's Summit was exploding, and we were building buildings every two years. Those buildings were wonderful and great at the time, but they're not the type of buildings we need now. And so that space is being renovated and updated to, in a way that allows our students and staff to have a much more effective space for learning and student achievement. Athletics and Activities, we spent 13 million dollars on improving our, our fields and our facilities, our press boxes. Really, you know, one of the things that Dr. Buck speaks about quite often is students who are in two or more activities in their career, in their, in their high school, middle school, elementary careers are more likely to be successful in their, in their careers. And so we want to give our students the opportunities to get engaged in activities and draw them into those opportunities. 13 million dollars on Athletics and Activities. East Trails Middle School, 76 million dollars, brand-new facility. Who's had a chance to be in East Trails Middle School? It is a wonderful facility, brand, brand-new, and if you, we need to get the opportunity to get you in there. So anytime, as Dr. Buck said, you would like to have a tour, please let us know. Our three middle schools, Pleasantly Middle School, Summit Lakes Middle School, and Bernard Campbell Middle School. As you know, we transitioned all of sixth grade into the middle schools, and so we needed more space. And so the 27.6 million dollars that we spent on our middle school renovations, added classrooms, created more collaborative space for our staff and our students to work in together, and it provided, provided that facelift. And our oldest middle school, Pleasantly Middle School, needed that, needed that facelift. And a significant amount of improvements were made in all of our buildings, but especially Pleasantly Middle School. Projects that are in progress as we speak, the project that never ends. Lee's Summit High School is, we broke ground almost a day after we passed the bond, and it's been a project ever since. It will, it will be completed this August, this fall, and we will enter this building. And it is an incredible work that's been done by our contractors and our staff and our students in that, in that facility. It is a major, major, major improvement, and we will celebrate this completion of this work when, when it's done. So the phase that we're currently in at, at Lee's Summit High Schools, we're building the spine. You know, we have the north side of the district, we have the south side of the district, and this spine that's being built right now is connecting the north side and the south side. This breezeway, not only is a way to, to transverse from the north to the south side, but also it has classroom space, it has a library media center in it, and it's wonderful space that, that will be very exciting. It's gonna really, I'll say, change the look of Lee's Summit High School once it's done. And these are just a few pictures that were taken back in December of the work that's being done. All right, we're gonna go on a bear hunt. Who's read the book, We're Going on a Bear Hunt? It's a wonderful book. If you've got kids, you ought to read it. If you don't have kids, you ought to read it anyway. We're going on a bear hunt. So part of the promised work that was put in front of the voters in 2020 was a new Great Beginnings Early Education Center. And the original plan was for that to be at Prairie View Elementary, where the opportunity came for us to purchase Paradise Park. The board, after careful consideration, took advantage of that opportunity. And so we have begun the work, and we will spend, I believe, right at 16 million dollars at this facility to upgrade it for an early childhood center, before and after-school offices. The Environmental Studies Center will be there. The hospitality program that Dr. Buck referenced will be at this facility, and we'll go into greater detail here in just a little bit on all the programming that will be done there. Layout of the first floor, layout of the second floor. But here's what I want to highlight, going on a bear hunt. So our students in the early childhood center will go into the beach, into the grasslands, into the river, into the mountains, into the caves, into the forest, and back home as well. It's gonna be a beautiful and wonderful facilities, and you can see this rendering that kind of outlines what some of this space is gonna look like. The outdoor space, now, this is, going back to this space, this is space that we promised our voters that we would, we would deliver. The next projects that I'm gonna get into are gonna be the, what I'm gonna describe as the value-added. Because of what our voters approved, because of the market, because of allowing us receiving those premium bonds and the additional interest in this market, we're gonna be able to add some work that we hadn't originally planned. So this outdoor side at Paradise Park, we'll have the Environmental Studies Building, which is the former firehouse, we have the auxiliary restrooms, a pond and dock, pavilion, nature walk, and we'll go into deeper discussions as to what this work will be in this space. And some of the work that's being done at Paradise Park. Robotics and Geometry and Construction, this is also a value-added. If you have heard, our robotics program is one of the very best in the world. Our students compete internationally and always achieve high marks, finish high in the competition. Also, the opportunity for those robotics programs to have their own space. Right now, they all work out of Lee's Summit High School. Each robotics program will have their own space at their own buildings, which will include a field. And the robots go out onto the field, and they compete, and gives them that leg up for when they have the opportunity to compete against other schools and other districts. Also in this space will be our Geometry and Construction Program. Dr. Buck mentioned the Amped on Algebra Program. Well, the next phase of that, the next step in that curriculum is the Geometry and Construction. This is an opportunity for our students to step into a construction environment and learn those geometric and geometry concepts that sometimes are more, are easier to learn within a hands-on experience. This is some of the work that's being done at Lee's Summit West. Then the last project that's in, that's going on at this, at this time is the, is the work at Miller Park. You all know that this is one of the original buildings, and it's been about everything in the district that it could possibly be. But the original building houses a program that works with some of our most severely disabled students. Also on the site was our flight program, as well as our great program, which are for, it's a program for students 18 to 21. And significant work is being done at this location as well. An elevator's being added to the original building. The flight building currently, or I should say, has been a couple of mobile units, and those have been taken out, and the flight building itself is being built as we speak. And then the great building will be renovated this summer after the flight building is, is complete. And once again, very early in this, in this process as well. All right, we've completed a lot of work. We're in the process of completing a lot of work, but where do we go in the future? Where a lot of work has to be done. We've talked a lot about partnerships, we've talked a lot about collaboration, bringing in external and internal stakeholders in this process. Where do we go from here? That's yet to be determined. As we go through the process, and President Campbell mentioned, the, the long-range capital improvement plan, that will involve a lot of people in this room. It'll involve students, it'll involve staff, our, many of our stakeholders in the community. We're gonna get a lot of people around the table, and we're gonna talk about what we need to do in this district. Looking, one of the major factors that drive what we do with our facilities is our stat, is our enrollment. If you look at the table on the left, you'll see that currently we have 17,466 students in the district. You'll notice, interestingly enough, that our enrollment, nine, 12, grades nine through 12, is higher than what you see in the early grades, K5, 6, 8. That's driven by, most, most likely driven by house prices. You know, you think about that young family, that starter home family that has two or three children of that elementary age. Right now, the prices in, in our, in our school district of our homes makes it difficult for that family to move in. But as they, as they get older, they, they mature, maybe they get promotions, the kids get older, they move into our district. So we're a buy-up district. We're that destination district. And all of a sudden, you see our, our younger grades grow, about 400 students by the time they get, they get into high school. And so we're seeing that as well. But we're seeing our enrollment going, in, in the, in the coming years, our enrollment is gonna stay in that 17,000 to 18,000 range. So we're not anticipating any significant growth in our school district. We're very stable, very stable enrollment. Also, that line graph on the right, you'll notice that the birth rate in our state, in our county, is going down. And so we're, we don't anticipate to see the type of growth that our district saw in, at least in, in our enrollment, in, that we saw in the 1990s and early 2000s. So what does that mean for us as we move forward? Does that mean we need to build buildings? We might need to add on to some buildings. We might, we're definitely gonna renovate some buildings. I mentioned the buildings that we built in the 1990s and 2000s, you know, they're 20, 25 years old now. Those HVAC units, those roofs, those sidewalks, those doors, those windows, they need to be repaired and replaced. And so we will have discussions about what we do about that. More likely, we're looking at some potential bond issuance in, in 2025, '26, '27, and '24. Thank you.
So to finish up on that, what he's talking about grade level, year after year, we're seeing our seniors, juniors classes be 300 to 400 kids bigger than our kindergarten first grade classes. So that means every year we graduate kids, as a district, we have to grow 300 to 400 kids to break even in total enrollment. And that's kind of where we've been treading water. So as long as that pattern sticks, we're okay. If I look at our facilities, now that we moved sixth grade elementary, in the next 10 years, the one building we're probably most concerned about is Hawthorne Hill. We'll watch the growth there. If you stand on the front porch, you see so many subdivisions going up from the front porch. But that's the place we'll watch. This building, we're in the hallways, so we need to expand this. And then, like I said, we have some buildings that need some, some attention. We know the southeast corner's growing, which even outside of the city limits, we have quite a few subdivisions going out there, so we're watching that piece as well. The outlier everyone wants to know about was what about when PRI pops? All right? So that's the Church of Latter Day Saints land, there's 4,200 acres. And when that does, and it's supposed to have, when it's fully built out, 25,000 more citizens. We're at 101,000 citizens in the city, I think, at the 2020 census. So 25% growth. That does include then we have acreage set aside on maps with, with them saying this will be places that will move forward and, and build more schools. So we have stars on the map for six elementaries, a couple of middle schools, and a high school, when that comes. So that will create another growth that you saw 25 years ago, 30 years ago. But currently, our current population, we're growing, and it's replacing our bigger senior classes. If I look at North Kansas City, the second-largest school district in the state, their senior class is about the same exact as ours. The difference is, their kindergarten class is the same size as their senior class. Ours are not. If you go out a little bit farther east or south, districts are opposite. Their kindergarten classes are bigger than their high school class, because as their families get more stability as they get older, then they can move into communities like our community. So that's kind of the difference in structure, so. All right. That's our first, it's a long one, I know. That's by far the longest one we'll have. We'll be happy to entertain questions, Board President Campbell, myself, or Dr. Shelton.
You'll have to get somebody else's microphone. Can you, can he get your microphone? Any questions, so I can raise your hand, so I can call on people? Yes, Councilmember Adson.
Dr. Buck, I was really pleased to see all the apprenticeship and career training that you all are adding into the curriculum. And I hope that sometime in the future, the city and the school district can even grow that further and take all the building projects we do at the city and at the school district and teach our kids those career, those career jobs on-site, so we can use those tax dollars to train people in these careers. I hope that somehow, you know, in the next couple of years, we can work together to figure that out. Thank you.
Agreed 100%. And like I said, Dr. Bonnison's a good thought partner with me on that, and we've had quite a few meetings with the fire department, for example, on that, and, and we'll continue to do so. And our meetings, all of a sudden, had other fire departments showing up because they're also needing people, so.
And to your point, I was in a meeting just the other day where we talked about the trades and those construction areas, how we can move on that, so those are in discussion.
Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm really excited about the, of course, the fire academy, but I do have a question. Do you know, if you guys plan on doing, like, so I know dyslexia is a big focus and struggling readers. Are you guys planning on hiring a dyslexia specialist, or have you looked into hiring a dyslexia specialist?
Dr. Barker, can you answer that question? So we've, we've used some of our stimulus money from, our ESAR money for, to hire somebody temporarily, and we're gonna keep it full-time.
Yep, absolutely.
So we have, again, as Dr. Buck mentioned, we have an ESER MTSS reading specialist, who we use some of the ESER funds for. And just recently, we have worked internally to ensure that she can stay on and become the district-designated dyslexia struggling readers. She'll work with our reading specialists, and she will be the go-to struggling readers contact for the district, both for those students with dyslexia and those students who are struggling with readers that may not have that diagnosis.
So is she also the math specialist? Is it the same?
She is not. We have one in math and one in reading.
Okay. And she's proficient in, like, Orton-Gillingham and...
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And on top of that, we're, early grades are all going through, and a three-year plan to have everybody through letters training, as well as all of our reading specialists.
Questions or comments?
I'll say a couple of comments. Like Councilmember Edson, love the workforce development, of course. We're going to talk more about that, though. And your focus on trades, it just wasn't a conversation we were having, you know, five, six years ago, and I just think it's very important. And I'm really excited about the robotics investment and geometry. You know, the Lee Summit High School, you've really making sure that there's that balance, and you've pulled it up and, by its bootstraps, and you're going to get it there, and I think that's really important. And yes, it's a mess over there, but that's okay. I'll give you time to fix that. Because you can't, I know where the building is, or the room I'm supposed to be in, but how do I get there right now? And then, I didn't know about the Miller Building. That's pretty interesting. That's...
If I may, so Miller Park and geometry and construction and some other projects you saw towards the end, the value-added Paradise Park, are all possible, because we were able to sell our bonds at a premium. At that time, interest rates were really low, so people wanted to pay extra for school bonds. You couldn't do that right now in this environment, because people would want to invest in different ways, because interest rates are high. And also because Nathan Holder did a fantastic job of investing. When we get funds, we have to spend eighty-five percent of it in a very short period of time, but we've done investments in a short period of time until we expended those, and that's allowed us also to earn some interest. So those are because of good fiscal management, a high bond rating. We think our Stifel partners are helping us out with that. We have a very high bond rating, and, you know, so we're a good investment for investors.
Yes. And a couple more things. Early childhood, just the fact that you've made that investment, and that's just huge for our community. And I wasn't sure how it was going to happen or when, but you've met the timeline quicker than I expected. And I've always, I think, as a, you know, just a member of the community and former school board member, I've always had confidence in the school district's ability to handle growth, and we as council members do as well. But just, you're talking about value-add. You're really cutting-edge and state-of-the-art with these initiatives, so keep going. We love it. All right. Any further questions, comment? Okay, well, I wish I would have not put them first on the agenda, because that's a tough act to follow. You're going to have to help me, Mr. Dunning. I am going to borrow your computer, Mr. Buck, Dr. Buck, is it up there? Okay. Yeah, I think I'll borrow that real quick. Just need the website, your internet. There we go. CityofLS.net. Yeah, there we go. Well, I'll try to follow in their footsteps, just with regard to State of the City as far as strategic plan. That's what I was going to focus on. Here's our City of Lee Summit website. And right here, under City Government, you go down to Strategic Plan. Click on it, and you will see our Ignite Strategic Plan. A lot of work went into this from citizens, stakeholders, school board members, many from the school district. It was a great collaborative effort, our city council, community partners, and more. And this was, it took us about eighteen months to get through it. And our vision as the city is right here. It says, "To have a vibrant community ensuring the finest quality of life for all generations." And that's an important aspect of it, all generations. "Our mission is to enrich lives in our community through collaboration, creativity, and commitment. And our core values are stewardship, integrity, service, and excellence." And so, I thought I would just touch base on, below here, you see Critical Success Factors. You see the different ones, strategic economic development, cultural and recreational amenities, and so on. I think I'll start with this one. This is the one we're on tonight. Oops, go back. Which is Collaborative Relations with Education Partners. And on our website, if you click on it, it will take you through to, you know, agendas and activities that have occurred. And I just would say about, you know, the collaborative relations with our education partners, the list of partnerships and opportunities for us to work together, as I mentioned earlier tonight, I just couldn't be more pleased. I will tell you that I love being part of the city council. I love the council members that we have. The city staff is phenomenal and super talented, just as your school district administration is. But when I go to East Trails Middle School, or when I see the activities you all are doing, I am a little jealous. I'm seriously, I love it. I just, it's so exciting, because you're touching the lives of the youth in our community, our children. And again, keep in mind that I think about how you're creating that brand that we're so proud of. So we do want to have a collaborative relationship with you, as you can see here. This does talk about different things. And if you click on the Implementation Plan, it will take you to something that you academics love so much, a Gantt chart. Yeah. So you get your strategies and your objectives. Yours would probably be a lot more detailed if I was, if it was the school districts, but that's okay. We're still in line, and it just talks about the different things that we're trying to do to stay focused on our collaborative relations. And you can see our city, we've got some engineers on staff to help us get through this, like Ryan Ehlum. He loves this stuff. In a minute here, I'll have Mr. Dunning announce some of the people that are here from the city, and Ryan Ehlum is one of the new assistant city managers. So he loves strat plans. Next, I would like to say, let's go back. Another one is, we want to raise our children, and we want to live our lives in a safe community. We want to live, work, and play with a community that has cultural and recreational amenities. And some of our council members really think that it's really important to make sure that if you live here, work here, go to school here, you need to have things to do here. So our parks and our recreational activities and such are critical to our future success and health. We also want to be a multi-generational community. I mentioned for all ages earlier, where we raise our children, where we can live in our community, when our children can actually live in our community when they enter the workforce, just as Dr. Shelton was saying. Homes are not so affordable. How do we make sure that we're keeping our kids here? And so that they don't move away and end up staying somewhere else. We want to keep them close to us. We want to be where we can be taking care of our parents when they get older. And you'll hear later tonight, we have some more senior living opportunities in our community. And we certainly want to be a place where we can grow old together. So we need strong neighborhoods, and that's one of our critical success factors. We need strong neighborhoods with housing choices. And underneath there, you'll see, if you click through, you'll see our Gantt chart again with our objectives and goals. We also want to keep our children and citizens safe where we live, work, and play, and we plan to do so by focusing on two critical success factors. One would be, oops, go back. One would be the community health and well-being, and also city services and infrastructure. You know, when we talk about being focused on health and well-being, we're talking about being public safety-minded, we're talking about mental and physical health and such. I think you've noticed that our city council is a very public safety-minded council the last five years. And we've built fire stations, we've been providing tools for our police, and equipment such as vehicle cameras, body cameras. We've been funding our police, I think I might have mentioned this last year. We are funding our police in a way that they can provide mental health co-responders. It's something that we're really proud of in Lee Summit. So we're doing so much more as well. Keeping our roads safe is a part of the infrastructure, you know, making sure that your kids can travel on those buses to get to the schools is a critical part of our success, because your brand is our brand. And then, another critical success factor is community engagement. It's right here. You know, community engagement is just a way of making sure that all voices in our community can be heard. And like the school district, we do strive to be as transparent as possible. And we continually work to engage our citizens via focus groups, surveys, citizen committees, and more. And lastly, we are highly focused on strategic economic development that will build an adaptable framework, and this is what the plan says, that our community will remain vibrant for the next fifty years. The council has, our council, the last five years has passed over one-point-five billion dollars in new construction developments. That's residential and retail and commercial as well. And that's a lot of new property taxes that's benefiting our schools, county, and state, and it includes residential developments, retail office, and more in recent years. I know that for decades, our community has talked about wanting spec buildings to bring jobs here and bring industrial here. Well, just in the last couple of years, not even going back four or five, but in the last couple of years, the council has approved one-point-seven million square feet of industrial spec buildings, and then some of them are moving forward under construction right now. And that one-point-seven million square feet is going to bring hundreds of jobs. And those hundreds of jobs are going to lead to more jobs, supplier jobs and multiplier jobs that follow. And these jobs will result in even more economic benefit for the city in the way of sales tax revenues, along with the property tax revenues that come with more new construction. These companies that come here needing jobs will want to know that we are facilitating a culture conducive to workforce development. And in my opinion, I don't, I do not believe anybody in the metro or state is doing workforce development as superbly as Lee Summit. And I credit LSR seven, you all, this organization, this board, Dr. Buck, and the administration and your leadership, for the amazing amount of time, dedicated resources, funds, that you've been putting towards this endeavor the last few years. So in a moment, the next topic, we will actually hear about workforce development, and I'm really looking forward to that. As far as data goes, I'll let Mr. Dunning come up. I mean, just generally speaking, I'm not going to go into the detail. Plus, we still have to talk about some other topics that we'll have a few more details. But we're a hundred and five thousand now, approximately, sixty-seven square miles. And if you look at our city, when you look at, let's see here, map of City of Lee Summit. This map, as you see Lee Summit, our map, we're not star-shaped, but look how far north we go and how far south. And of course, your school district goes, has bigger boundaries than this. You go much further to the east and all the way over past Seven Highway. But for both of us, it creates challenges. For you, you have to have schools in proximity of all the citizens, and we have to try to figure out how to have fire stations in proximity and have them be centrally located. It really becomes a challenge for the police, because you don't really need police headquarters in numerous locations, but we actually do. We're looking at substations if the new bond initiative that we're putting for the no-tax increase passes. But it creates challenges for our public safety like you would not believe. Of course, you know, snow removal and more is affected. So in so many ways, we have similar operation issues. And the size of our city, sixty-seven square miles, creates lots of challenges. Of course, Dr. Buck mentioned PRI. Yes, that's going to create more challenges, and we'll talk more about that in just a little bit. But I just would say that as far as our State of the City with regard to funding, is we've been doing very well. The sales tax, you all know, have been coming in. We've been very fortunate that way, but we've also taken a lot of actions, just as the school district has, with regard to making sure or paving our own path. A few years ago, we passed the use tax. That's making sure that when you buy something on Amazon, we get our sales tax, because that does take tax dollars away from our local retail, such as the Walmarts and more. And then also, or even if you were to buy at a Home Depot or a Best Buy, those are ways that we would often lose sales tax revenues. But we put that before the voters a few years ago, and they passed it. And then we followed that up with the reallocation of debt, which, we're going to learn more about that from your perspective tonight. And the voters supported us and approved it, and that was helpful for our revenues. And then finally, last year, we passed the half-cent public safety sales tax. And I know that, I can tell you this, that we're already benefiting from that. We're able to hire firefighters, police officers, and much more, whereas some of the surrounding communities are really struggling to keep, to even fund, you know, to even put in place the amount of officers that they have in their budget. So we're super competitive right now. I think that those things have helped us put ourselves in a good position on the budget side, and we're pretty blessed that way, just as the school district is. So Mr. Dunning, do you want to add some of this, add to the commentary?
Thank you, Mayor Baird. I would like to take a moment, recognizing I'm a new organizational leader in this capacity, first time in front of the school board. But I'd like to introduce some of our staff that have moved into different positions as well. So Ryan Ehlum is now an Assistant City Manager overseeing, go ahead and stand up, Ryan, Public Works, Development Services, and Water Utilities. And then backfilling, so we're all kind of shuffling seats here. Ryan backfilled my spot, and then I see Josh Johnson over here. He is our new Development Services Director. So he's been with the city for almost five, six, almost six years. And then you may have seen, we're bringing on a third Assistant City Manager position. A lot of what Mayor Baird just referenced in our strategic plan, and a lot of these initiatives that we're trying to move forward, if you can imagine, we're trying to keep all of our operations and city services going, at the same time trying to make improvements and move the needle in some of these strategic plan initiatives. And feel strongly that Donna Lake, who, as you may have been aware, was the fire chief in Kansas City, Missouri, will be joining our organizational leadership team in the city manager's office. And so, we're going to be welcoming her next month and joining our crew. So we're excited for that opportunity from an organizational leadership perspective. One of the things, Dr. Buck, we just had similar, we called it our all-hands meeting, where all of our, as many employees as we can get there, to listen to great things happening within the city organization. And one of the things that I've shared with our staff is that the manner in which we conduct our work, the approach that we take to our work, that's what matters. Stats, we can talk about all these achievements and things that get done along the way, how many miles, how many potholes we've filled, things of that nature. But the manner in which we do our work, that's what matters to this community. And I like, I will share with this group, that I am just so blessed to have a strategic plan as a foundation to make great things happen on behalf of the organization and the community. A comprehensive plan that we adopted right after the strategic plan to set that vision for how do we continue to develop as a community, and what do we feel are important. PRI's announcement, the timing of which that occurred, to better understand how this city might grow. So I share all that, that we've got a great foundation in front of us to make all kinds of great things happen for this community. And the manner in which we do that, the approach that we take, is what matters. And that's why I tie back to our core values. Stewardship, being mindful of the resources, integrity, and service excellence. I preach that to every new hire, and so do our Assistant City Managers, if I'm not available. That matters. Those are our core values. And then, if you look at our mission statement, there's three Cs in there. So I always preach SIS and three Cs. Collaboration, creativity, and commitment. That all talks to us about the approach that we take to our work. So we need to be very mindful of that. And then in setting up the strategic plan, I wanted to hit on a few things that we're structuring here to launch us forward, to move those initiatives forward. Mayor mentioned council. We call it the C-four. It's council, it's city, organization, it's community... It's council, it's city, organization, it's community partners, school district, being one of those citizens, moving the ball forward on our strategic plan. And I'm not going to steal the thunder, many of these items on, on our agenda this evening, if you look back at our strategic plan, whether we know it or not, are folding right into that strategic plan. So as we go about our work in, in, in an approach that we do here in Lee Summit, every one of us can be mindful of what are we focused on, what are we working on now and how does that connect back to the strategic plan so that collectively, we can start measuring our progress across all of these fronts. So that C4 is important. Tonight, we're kind of focused on collaborative relations with education partners, but I would venture to say when we, workforce development, that's part of strategic economic development and community engagement and many other things that we'll talk about tonight. One of the things that I did want to mention is our efforts to, I'll say reorganize, re-energize our, many of our boards and commissions in alignment with our strategic plan. Many of those boards and commissions were a result of previous strategic plan efforts. Now that we have a new strategic plan, we're structuring this to support this strategic plan and still be mindful of all the great work that, that got us to where we are today. And so some of those Historic Preservation Commission, Beautification Commission, Arts Council, all independent boards and commissions, now they're under the umbrella of our Cultural Commission. And they can have sub, subcommittees, still focused on all that work. That will help us move, advance the ball down the field in, in those realms. Our Health Education Advisory Board, Human Services Advisory Board and Livable Streets Advisory Board, those three boards or commissions are now under a, a bigger umbrella, our Wellness Commission. And we're in the process of populating those boards. I know Mayor Baird is working hard to, we wanted to check with all of those boards and commissions, see if there's still an interest in serving. And, and we have opportunities to put new members in those roles. And so I, I want to say into this month, beginning of February, there's going to be loads of opportunities for folks who have involvement, want to play a part in this and moving forward with our strategic plan. At the end of the day, how fortunate are we? We've, the collaboration, the care for which we go about what we do, it, it matters. I'm blessed to be serving in the capacity and honored. So I'm going to stop there because I know we have a lot of our, lot on our agenda and many of the things that I think we'll hit on, we'll touch on within the agenda topics.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor Baird. Do we have any questions, board members? Comments? Board Member Sparks?
I appreciate the work that the city is doing and I would encourage you to keep on with the progression that has taken place. The question that I have is, I know the last time that we met as a joint with the city and the board, housing, affordable housing came up as a topic and there was some dialogue. What steps have we taken as, from a city standpoint to make sure that affordable housing is taking place up to date?
Right, yeah. Great question. I remember, I remember last year answering that question and I, I thought a lot about it after the meeting. Because I, I was like, did I answer it right? Did I answer it right? Because I felt like I was a little bit negative because I was like, I basically told Board Member Sparks, I'm not sure if we're going to get this done. We, we've been trying, behind the scenes, we've been trying. Applications have been, have been submitted and Lee Summit wasn't, wasn't getting chosen for the grants that were needed to make these projects or developments, I say pencil or make sense financially for someone to develop it. This year, there were three applications and I'm going to let Mr. Dunning tell you a little bit about because you're, you're much more versed. Three different applications, all three of, would have worked. Two in particular, we were super, I think, super excited or supportive of and one did get some funding. So, Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, this year, we, we were aware of three applications at the state. We worked with the city, worked directly with the Lee Summit Housing Authority on an application. This is the second year in a row that that has occurred and we keep hearing more promising news and maybe next year is the year or perhaps off cycle of their usual annual cycle, maybe there's an opportunity there. So little promising feedback that we've heard through the housing authority on, on their latest application. In addition to that, there's a, an entity that the preliminary development plan was approved for the, for the housing in behind the police department over by the, I think it's still a red dot storage facility in that area. They did not, were not successful either though. That was the second year that we're aware that they applied with the state. And then the third one is up in Willshire, the Willshire Lakewood area. That one did get approved. So there's going to be some opportunities up there for, with, with partnership through the state application processes. I would also add that there has been some discussion at CED, our Community and Economic Development Committee about housing costs, housing attainability, to the extent that Councilmember Edson chairs that committee and, and we've had interaction with the development community on how can we do better at this? What can the city do to help curb the cost of housing or development within Lee Summit? So those, those discussions continue on and I don't know, Councilmember Edson, do you, do you have anything to add to that? I know, I know we've started the discussion, but there's no easy answers, right? The development community, it's challenging.
Right, and there, there are no easy answers and, but we, we're continuing to chip away at it and we've been very lucky because we've had builders and real estate agents who have actually come to our committee and they are very anxious to help us try and solve the problem. So I'm hoping that we'll have a better answer for you like halfway through the year. We've got some more work and we keep getting sidetracked by some other things that have to be taken care of right now. But it's something that we've been working on for months and we continue to talk about. Thank you.
It's a follow-up. Have we defined what affordable housing is? I know that that was another kind of question that I asked and I think that it's important that we define what affordable housing is because not only do we need to make sure that individuals that are working here, that they can live here, but also that they can take care of the properties once they get them. And so we have to make sure they can afford it, but then also that they still have money and resources to be able to take care of them so their property values stay the same.
Can I answer that real quick? My definition is what can my kid afford? So for example, I have a kid right now, he's 28, he's working full-time, he graduated from here, he's wanting to buy a house and in the next, I think he wants to buy one in the next year, what can he afford? And so that's my basis. Everything else, I don't care about. So I don't know, I'm sure somebody else has a better answer.
Well, I can at least, I can chime in on one thing and I'll need help, but with regard to Board Member Sparks, with regard to the demographics of Lee Summit, one thing that's hurt us because we had three applications and we, we got approved for one, so there's a, there is a success story in here. One of our, you know, applicants got approved. But part of the problem is when our income, we don't have what, a low enough income, I guess is the way to word it, to help these applicants and these developers get the, the grants that are needed to, to make them affordable. So we used to, I think in the 64063 demographic or geographic area, which there was a portion of the downtown, we were eligible and it helped, but we've, we just keep, our, our, our community keeps, keeps growing and, and even those, the homes in those areas have gone up so much. So it's a real challenge because Lee Summit does have needs, it's just that we're not, some of our needs are not as great as the surrounding zip codes around our community and so we end up losing out to them. And so to me, we've learned a lot over the last few years because we have focused on it. We've had the Lee Summit Housing Authority in, we've, Councilmember Edson is right, they've had developers coming in, talking to, to them about what advantages they need. And even the Lee Summit Housing Authority, when they've, because they've applied numerous years and even they've learned some lessons along the way. You know, how can they present better? And, you know, sometimes you just got to, you just got to keep going and learn, learn how, the process and, and what looks best in the presentations and what best to prioritize or, or to accent whenever they're making their applications. So I think that because we have, I mean, if you've got three applicants, we've got a better chance of getting, you know, having success and that's, that's the direction we want to keep going.
Board members, other questions? Board Member Aslake?
So along the lines of the housing, and maybe this is a silly question, but just from my own knowledge, when you're referring to grants, are you talking about vouchers, subsidized housing or what is, what does that mean?
No, it's, it's federal dollars. Go ahead, Mr. Dunning.
Low-income housing tax credit programs through Missouri Housing, MHDC, Missouri Housing and Development Corporation.
Mr., you want to have Mr. Ehlum come up? This is kind of up his alley, isn't it?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in Ryan's area. If there's more technical questions, I'm sure he could enlighten us on that.
Good evening, Ryan Ehlum, Assistant City Manager. So the Lytech program, as we kind of refer to it, is the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And those are the three projects that have had multiple applications on over the last several years that this year was the first year that Willshire was successful on that. Now, we've been working very closely with Chairman Edson and all of the CEDC on a number of attainable housing initiatives that aren't necessarily directly related to affordable housing. So vocabulary gets kind of mixed around and thrown around quite a bit between affordable and attainable and income restricted and senior restricted and, and things like that. So the, the low-income housing tax credits are, are just one piece of kind of the overall conversation when we talk really about our strong neighborhoods with housing choice. So a lot of the things that really Josh has been leading quite a bit, Josh Johnson is taking a look at our zoning code, looking at what could be some drivers in that that may be driving cost up? What is the, I guess, I'll say the, the impact of changing that, both from a long-term perspective and a short-term perspective? And, you know, what are the, if we were to take and reduce our minimum lot size, for example, or create a new zoning district that allowed for smaller lots or increased density, we're analyzing those impacts along the way. Because a lot of the zoning codes have been put into place over the years to try to achieve a goal. And so now it's kind of analyzing what those can look like moving forward in the future. And that's just one of, it's probably four or five different things that we're looking at really detailed. Accessory dwelling units are, are one of those, those items and narrow lots are really probably the two main ones and I'm looking at Chairman Edson to make sure I'm not stepping out.
Okay. Board Member Sparks?
I just want to make sure that my statements or my questions are not being misinterpreted. I want to make sure that I'm not suggesting that we need to enhance more Section 8 housing or a voucher system. I'm saying housing of individuals that is like your son, that is actually going to work and can be able to afford to be able to live in this community. And so that's what I'm stating. And I just would like to see a little bit more focus on it as a city and us actually be able to, because our kids are graduating and some of them are not leaving this city. Some of them are staying here, they're working and we want them to be able to move out of our houses, but into their own house.
Great, thank you, Board Member Sparks. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Now we'll turn it back over to Dr. Buck.
So great segue with Board Member Sparks there. We, we definitely want our kids to live in the community, but we do want them to move out of our house. And so that's workforce development. And I would say, there's many things that, that our city and our school district are set apart in the state. We're a destination city, we're a destination district. I can't tell you how many times I get developers asking, hey, can you annex this piece of property so we could develop it and be in Lee Summit School District? No, that's not how it works. We don't, you just don't come and ask, hey, Dr. Buck, can you sign off and, and this becomes Lee Summit? That doesn't work that way. You can find in many different directions, once you get out of our boundaries, development stop or developments doesn't happen, don't happen because we are a destination city and district and I cannot thank the Board of Education, City Council and the staff from both entities here and making that a reality for our kids. So one of those areas is workforce development and don't worry, we're going to get faster. We've already done over half our slides. But here's what I want to show you. On the right, you see a Calvin and Hobbes. I love this Calvin and Hobbes. He's asking you, or ask about, you know, what are your New Year's resolution? He says, eh, I'm going to do the same thing as last year, I'm going to just wing it. That is not the way we approach strategic planning. So we're very strategic about it. I can tell you that Dr. Bonison's going to share some pieces with that, but we're also working under the US Chambers model and trying to create pathways from K-12 education up through employment at the far end. So allied health and things like that. So he's going to hit some of those. I also want to share and I would advise or encourage the council maybe to do this as well. We took, we took our leadership team, there's some of us there, we split in two groups at Polytainers, but we went to John Knox Village. We went to St. Luke's East Hospital and Polytainers one morning this month and learned about all the different job opportunities they have, what they're seeing in applicants, what are they not seeing in applicants, what gets somebody fired, what technical reading, writing and math they see, those types of questions, which helps inform us in our work. So I, I would encourage you guys to do that. It was fantastic. Plus, you don't know what's in your backyard. And, you know, if I go over here to Tech 9's place, that's the largest green screen east of California and it's just literally about, you know, 400 yards over here. Movies are, are sometimes performed there. A Star is Not Born, I think, was a part of that. Bradley Cooper and Lady Gaga would come in and do scenes over here. So we have some amazing things in our district. I encourage you to get out and see that. So Dr. Bonison's going to hit on a, a little bit of pathway and we both have different mics, we're going to have to share them.
So as to the, the strategy that we have involved, so maybe a little bit different than when you were in school, where how do I prepare for, for my career? A lot of times you get to explore, you take some classes and then after high school, you're on your own to try to figure out the pathway. And we want to do a better job with that in being more intentional with our students. This graphic is the career continuum. As we work with our students, very intentional with helping them understand who they are as, as a youngster, what, what are their interests, what are their skills, and then embedded into the curriculum, helping them to understand that. Many times when I talk to people, how did you get your job or your career? Well, it looked like a ping pong ball. I, it was here, then I pivoted this way and that way and I finally ended into my career. That's not how we want to set up our students for their future. And so many times with self-awareness or even career awareness, it may be Aunt Lucy says, well, you're, you're good with Legos, you should be an engineer. And the student goes and pursues that life endeavor and then realizes, I don't like this because it wasn't about him or her, it was what somebody else said. That self-awareness piece is so important. We use Riasac, which is a, a model that's, that's used for ONET or for the Department of Labor for categorizing every job in the United States and helping students understand what is their, their personality, their skills, are they a thinker, a creator, a doer? And then the careers that, that go with that. And then the career awareness, which is not what your family does or just what's on TV, but really what are all the careers that are out there right now? Many students don't consider the things outside their, their lens that they have in their home or on TV. It's important that they understand the incredible opportunities that are out there right now. So we have in elementary school, there are career lessons and they are more robust than what we've had done in the past because we are working more closely with industry, with community. And then expanding into client-connected projects where students can see really what happens on the outside walls of, of schools. Moving into career exploration and opportunities for students to explore, taste it, touch it, learn what those opportunities are and have practice, whether that is with our fabulous robotics clubs that we have, where they can see the industries aligned with those, or opportunities to shadow within some of our community organizations that we partner with, or Cyber Patriot program and so forth. In middle school, we have our courses that we've redesigned in most recent years to help students think about what are those exploration, exploration pathways. And then finally into preparation to give them foundational skills for those next levels. Now, the last level is hard to see, which is career training. This is entrance into the workforce. So you see STA, Herndon and other opportunities within our, our schools that we have built and are building where students can actually have earn and learn options, certifications, or if they choose to go to college, they're well positioned to do very well. So it's a very strategic process that is embedded in the work that our teachers are doing these last few years and we're excited about it.
So we, you shared the three Cs, Mark, and I like that. We have the three Es. We want kids when they graduate to be one of these three Es. We want kids, when they graduate, to be one of these three Es: enlisted, enrolled, or employed. Right? If they're moving on when they're there, and we want to be well-prepared. We want to have a great plan, but we're so prepared, if that plan ends up pivoting, they're well-positioned to take care of new opportunities and take advantage of those. So, with that, sometimes we have some very unique programs that nobody else in the nation has. Or we have, you know, such as Aerospace Academy is one of a kind, or sometimes it's we have the best in the nation. So, for example, we have a Cisco Systems Network Training here. There's 2,000 in North America. There are five considered lighthouse, the best in the nation. One of the five is right here in this building. All right? So, but we also know we have other programs that are more traditional or non-traditional. So, we have the strength for that. We're always looking to how we're gonna expand. This district hasn't had FFA since 1978. Dr. Bonnison and I are kind of trying to figure out, can we bring it back here next year or two years from now? All right? So, because there's a lot of money in advanced ag right now, and a lot of good jobs. And Kansas City is a huge hub for that biologics fields, and that would fit well with that. So, we're willing to partner and think differently. Shannon Booth was gonna talk about some of these things. She ended up having a statewide meeting tonight. I'm just gonna hit on one and offer, if you have an opportunity you want to get involved in, we'd love to have you. So, client-connected projects. And I see there's a couple people in the crowd who are working with us on this. One of the things we want to do is have real-world problems our kids can help solve. All right? And so, sometimes it might be a short-term project. Sometimes it might be a long-term project. Sometimes it might be an ongoing thing. Those client-connected projects are important. You're gonna hear a little bit next about, from Mr. Park and also Dr. Bonnison, about some projects we do with the city. But let me give you an example of just how you can think out of the box. You heard about Paradise Park earlier. One of the things at Paradise Park, there's three outdoor amenities. One of those is putt-putt golf. And we've talked about, hey, kids, can we reimagine what this putt-putt golf will look like? It's not gonna be done yet because we would have to, you know, save money up to do what their plans were. Let me give you just one of the school's examples. Lee Summit North had their kids in art classes coordinate with their kids in engineering classes and design out every course and create new holes and update them and make a theme to go with that bear hunt. You're talking about collaboration at a high level, very technical and very great presentation skills, and we have those now. And that's a client-connected project. All right? They're learning the skills, the standards they have in the curriculum, but they're doing it in a real-world setting, and thus, it seems like it's fun and also collaborative. And that's fantastic. That's what we want more of. So, we're gonna continue to do that. The pathways development, Dr. Bonnison, do you want us to mention anything about that and what you're doing with the U.S. Chamber Model?
Yes, absolutely. So, I work with Lee Summit Economic Development Council. There is something called the Lee Summit Workforce Alliance. And there are two different subcommittees in that. One is called the K-12 Pipeline, so working with schools and industries. And then there's the Adult Pipeline. So, one is the immediate need, the adult, and then also developing a pipeline with K-12. So, have been working with many of you in this room for that initiative, and it's a different way. So, before, it was really about, let's have a career fair. Not many people attend career fairs because so much happens now electronically. It's already happens before you show up. So, instead, let's build a system that is a pipeline for students into careers, as well as working with our post-secondary partners, UCM and the other partners, MCC, to make sure that we have a system that helps every student into different pathways.
I can go to the next slide, I think, and I think it's yours.
So, with this slide, you were maybe thinking, what are some other examples? Well, most recently, with the Lee Summit Workforce Alliance and the K-12 Pipeline, we have been working on one of the largest employers. One is the Lee Summit School District, and we have a Grow Your Own for Teacher program. But next to that, one of the largest employers is our healthcare partners in Lee Summit. So, that was the next area that we chose to work on. And so, how do we develop pipelines there? And so, over the course of the last several months, we've been working with HCA and St. Luke's, University Health, also John Knox, Children's Mercy as well, of how can we build pipelines for students? So, excited, in the last few weeks, we've had some students hired for internship opportunities. So, we have four as pilots and more coming in the next coming weeks. So, we have students in physical therapy, in phlebotomy, in pharmacy. So, starting with STA, and then we will work from there. But we have students already, about 200 to 300 students who are focused in that area. They have applied with resumes. They have applied with their professionalism guidelines that we have where they self-evaluate for professionalism skills. And then they apply with our partners. And so, we have had students who are going into those opportunities, learning valuable skills. And then working with HCA, they have a program where $5,000 a year tuition reimbursement to grow into opportunities. We're working with other partners where that goes up to $5,000 a semester in a nursing assistant program. Children's Mercy and others are interested as well. So, helping students have a pathway for earn-and-learn. And so, we're very excited about that certification, earn-and-learn, to set them on a path for their future. Paragon Star, you may have heard of this little development. I'm joking. They have reached out to us and they said, we would like to work with you. And they've hired a student to help facilitate other client-connected projects for the future. They're also very excited about our hospitality program, as you can well imagine with what Paragon Star is doing. So, they are well-poised for other opportunities. We have a student who works at Worlds of Fun, a little bit outside of our area here, but was in our finance program. And that student is in charge of data analytics for really making Worlds of Fun more money. But when people come off the rides, how do we make sure that we are optimizing the opportunities for those people? Whether it's to eat something or to buy something, it's a high school student working on those data analytics. And we just learned recently that that student is in charge of hiring other interns and other people as well, as a high school student. It's just amazing. Ultrax Aerospace, just a little bit north of here in Lee Summit, has worked with us in the past. And because of COVID, it's been a little rough, but returning in a need with internships, client-connected projects, and a number of other small businesses are really poised to engage with us. So, these are just a few of the opportunities that we wanted to highlight.
And I want to go back to client-connected projects, registered apprenticeship, partnerships. If you have a need as an employer, we're happy to work with you. Two years ago, we restructured Sandbury Leadership Center. We actually have less people in the building, but our CTE programs, our Career Technical Education program, has tripled in staff. And so, we're very well-positioned, and we have been doing that, to work with businesses, and we're gonna continue to do that. I can't thank Shannon Booth and Dr. Bonnison and all of our staff for being thought partners, being willing to connect dots. Because sometimes we have businesses and employers come to us and say, we want to partner. And we say, oh, great. How do you want to partner? And they don't know how. Because that's not the traditional norm that schools and businesses did before. Well, with people like Dr. Bonnison, we've been able to figure out so many, and we're gonna continue to figure out so many other pathways. So, we're open for business. If you need help, we're happy to visit with you.
So, from there, any questions about workforce?
I can tell you that four years ago, a business owner would call me and say, I want to partner with the schools. I want to, we want to do some training. And I called you a few times for a few different people. And so, to think that we've gone from that four years ago, where there wasn't really this structure that you've put in place in such a short amount of time, and that you are actually offering guidance to them rather than them saying, you know, help, help. You're saying, hey, we're here to help. It's huge. And I know that the business community loves it. And you did all this in the middle of COVID, basically. I mean, you got it rolling. So, it's super impressive.
Yeah, I can't take credit. It's the leadership of the district and also Shannon Booth and her team who are paving the way and making those things happen. So, I was happy to play a part, but it's really that team who's done so much.
Yeah, but Dr. Buck, you've put how much towards this? You've put numerous employees that focus solely on this, haven't you?
We tripled the number of staff helping out with it. And Career Navigators is probably the biggest game changer for us. So, we have four employees, including one that has an office in this building, who are, their sole purpose is to connect kids to careers and connect businesses to kids. And they do a fantastic job. So, I couldn't be more grateful. This is our second year of having Career Navigators, and it's been a game changer for us.
All right. Thank you.
We want to highlight a partnership that has been going on for about 20 years. And with that partnership, it has really paved the way for a model for other programs. And it is our partnership with the Public Works in Lee Summit. It's been a fabulous partnership, in particular with our Engineering Field Experience, Capstone, here in this building, our engineering students who have a chance to work hand-in-hand with professionals in the field of engineering and construction within Lee Summit Public Works.
Thank you, Dr. Bonnison. Yeah, it's really an exciting program, and we feel blessed to be just a small part of that career development continuum that the school district works on. And also is an opportunity for us to support and reinforce our strategic plan element of collaborating with our education partners. And it has. It's been 20 years. And we're looking forward to the next few weeks when we get introduced to the new class, Field Engineering Experience, where our professionals get to work directly with your students and leading classroom discussions, teaching leadership. Of course, we love the technical details as engineers, but also presentation skills. And it all culminates to that Capstone presentation at the very end of their semester. And I know we've had council members present for those presentations. Our staff likes to come back and review. It is very rewarding. We've even seen some of their projects go to construction that they've designed. And I'm really looking forward to what they have coming before us next. And it is more than just public works. While we organize it, we have professionals from our Water Utilities Department, from planning to talk about site planning and zoning matters, as if these are actual projects moving through so they get the real experience of working with a city and bringing forward a project.
I actually have a clip in this PowerPoint of a student talking, so we'll showcase that. So, just a little bit of the history. So, it began in '01-'02, our school year, and students working again directly with Lee Summit's staff, about two days per week. And then you can see some of the skills that they're learning, where it is not just conceptual. They are actually doing the work for that project. It's a real project, not just a simulation. And so, it's powerful for students to be able to do, to learn some of these skills. The professionalism is one of the key highlights because students are used to learning technical skills, especially in this building. But what they don't get a chance to do is rub shoulders with professionals and see how that works in context. You can talk about professionalism skills in a classroom, but it works much better in practice. So, here are some previous projects, as was mentioned. So, a recycling facility, the airport expansion. Our students worked with that. Tudor Road and Douglas Street with a makerspace and office space concept. Lee Summit master plan for the Recovery Park or the Resource Center, and how to repurpose that. Current project will be, as was mentioned, northwest side of the airport for commercial development. So, that's what we're getting ready to work on, or our students are. So, here are some self-reflections of what students have said, that they've learned, how do you handle on a team? How does that work when you don't always get along? They get a glimpse of what that professional world looks like, what the problem solving that goes on with the clients and when they're working with professionals, working on a team to make sure that there's a common goal. These are all things that I'm sure all of us see practices that we have to do. Listening with professionals in a way that is constructive. And the creative freedom to allow students to fail but fail forward, to learn through some of those struggles. And that's what employers, when we talk to employers, that's what they want. They want problem solvers. They want thinkers. Because I don't know if you've looked at Chat, what's it called, GPT? If you've heard this, the latest buzz, that AI can do a lot of things, and it is moving very fast. But what AI can't do is work with a human being and work on a team. And so, it's very important for students to be able to take those technical skills and to create a product, the creative thinking, the problem solving. So, here's a little video of students presenting.
So, I think, like Kevin said, a lot of the technical aspects of the project were very difficult and also very rewarding. I think one of the most difficult things that we didn't really think about, or at least that I felt, was just the flexibility that you have to have to go through a project like this. It's almost like if you're answering like an essay question on a test. There's no multiple choice. You're not just grabbing answers, but then the question like keeps changing and shifting as you go. And you have to account for that as you move along. So, it becomes difficult, but also really helpful to learn through that process.
The most difficult thing for me, similar to what some of them have said, was working with the team. We have a larger class, a larger team than we did first semester. And we all do have different ideas, and sometimes we did disagree. We had huge class discussions over things we disagreed on. But everything, we ended up working things out, which was, it was great to see that we could work through those. The most gratifying thing for me was leaving class and seeing all the things I've been learning around me. Seeing everything come to life around me, I'm noticing way more than I ever did, and I'm appreciating it way more than I ever did. So, I'm starting to see what my career is gonna be like. I'm gonna see things, and I'm gonna understand how everything works. And it's gonna be nice because I'll be able to appreciate all the hard work that people have put into those.
All of those students, it's exciting to see where they're headed and they're going. They are positioned well because they had a chance to work with professionals in the field, and it set them apart from their peers. We had the chancellor of MU come a few years ago, and he talked about learning what students are doing in high school. He says, you are pushing us in college because this is not a standard practice. And these are students who are gonna be a step ahead of others. And so, that's what we seek to do in Lee Summit, is to make sure that our students are well-positioned for their future.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to speak to a little bit of more of an active project that we're working in collaboration with the school district. And that has to do with your aviation program. So, the city is pursuing its Eastside Airport Development Plan, a strategic plan or master plan and business plan, if you will, for the airport. And part of that next step is for us to construct what we named Hangar 2. It's a 40,000-square-foot hangar or footprint of a building. And it came to our attention by Dr. Bonnison and others at the school district that, hey, we're working on potentially maybe a collaborative project there. Do you have space at the airport that might be able to house the aviation program? You're outgrowing your space within this building, as I understand. And so, our staff has been working with your staff in a very positive direction. Our mayor and city council have put forward now a ballot measure in April to, among many projects, fund the construction of Hangar 2. It's already within the scope of its design that's moving forward. Right now, it's in combination with Eastside infrastructure, so the water lines, sewer lines, the actual infrastructure to support Eastside development. Design is, will begin shortly, within the next several weeks. So, we look forward to working with you on that partnership, see how we can't make that work together. I think we've got a longstanding, obviously 20-year history of collaborating on the STA program. And I think this next step is the aviation program. I don't know if you have anything else to add, but it looks very promising. I'm really excited. And hopefully, we get the support of our voters to advance construction of a project like that.
Just to add that we're excited that not only will it help students, but when you do the research, when there is a training program, it helps economically that whole area. Other airports that have done that have benefited, and it's added a lot of worth and value to that project. And so, it's truly a collaboration that will be energetic, not only for students, but also for the community.
And then the last project I'd like to mention is one that is really just getting kicked off in the respect of asking the school district. And Kyle Gorell will be a part of a stormwater advisory committee and helping us through the process of evaluating a stormwater utility for the city of Lee Summit. And so, we do see, even after whatever And so we do see, even after whatever outcome of that stormwater rate study occurs and whatever mechanism may be put forward to the voters late this year, and its success or failure, we still think there will be continued opportunity for collaboration with the school district in regard to stormwater education, whether that's actual programming or just your assistance and that public education component. As a city, we have to manage a permit, a stormwater permit, and part of that permit criteria is public education with regard to stormwater issues facing our community. So again, past, kind of present, and as we look forward to the future, I think we got a lot of great things ahead of us.
I want to add before we go to questions. I thank you on behalf of the school board, our staff, and our students. The city doesn't have to collaborate in that way and that learning experience. And that particular presentation I was in the room for last year, I learned more and forgot more about sewer architecture and engineering. It was amazing what those kids knew. And not all of them are going into engineering. In fact, one was going into theater out in Colorado. But it was incredible what they what they learned and could communicate and present. It was fantastic. And I thank you to the city on behalf of the school board and myself. You don't have to do that, but we benefit, we're all going to benefit from some civil engineers in the future.
Thank you. I'll tell you something, our staff really enjoys it. I think they benefit too. It's growth opportunities for our professionals who may be younger or newer in their careers to interact and to get that experience of teaching. They're engineers, usually that's not their first or best attribute in their career is to teach somebody else, but they they enjoy it just as much, so we appreciate it.
All right, questions or comments? Councilmember, or councilboard member, Fritchie?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to you, Michael, and and the city too, because, I mean, anyone who's lived around Lee Summit for any length of time knows that stormwater has been an issue for years and years and years. I know it's a continuing problem, and I appreciate how you have engaged our students in that thought process and your and your eye out to educating them. And then that can only spread and educate even more, because that's what we need, is we need a whole city of little problem solvers, don't we, to to be able to take care of the issues that affect all of our daily quality of life? And so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
If you wanted to learn more about stormwater, we're going to have a big meeting where we're going to have a master plan on stormwater. It's going to be really exciting. Thank you. All right, is everybody doing good? Keep going. Okay, Dr. Buck, we're going to go to the next topic, which is diversity and inclusion initiatives.
So one of our three board priorities is equity. And so Shelley was going to be here to present on this, Shelley Sanders, but she came ill this afternoon, was hoping to rally and to come. So Dr. Barker is going to come and punch. She probably didn't know exactly what Shelley was going to talk about because she didn't have the information and found out about an hour ago, she was going to, or two hours ago, I guess now, that she was going to have to take over. Here's what I will tell you, when we talk to groups like Casey Rising, Kansas City Chamber, or our large businesses in development, this is a topic they all talk about. Our chamber's working on this, and we know the city is, and we're going to hear from that in a second. We also know that, you know, I was in Rotary last year, and Summit Christian Academy was sharing their work in this area, and it was actually quite impressive what they were working on. So we're seeing private, public, business. This is a topic that is upfront and important to everyone. So we only have one slide. We'll see if Dr. Barker can remember what Ms. Sanders was going to talk about, and then we'll turn it over to the city.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to get to celebrate the work of dignity that is led by Ms. Sanders. And again, really, she and I chatted and wanted to share, there's lots of details in the work, right? We have a comprehensive plan, it's guided by our CSIP, and the details of the work exist. But what I think is important for council members and the community to think of is the infrastructure that is guiding our work around the DEI work. And really, when we think about what is the guiding principle of our infrastructure when it comes to diversity, we're talking about the fundamental concept of dignity and belonging. We want each of our students, our parents, our staff members, and our community members to feel a deep sense of dignity and a deep sense of belonging when they enter our space. And as a result, we've structured our equity work around a dignity infrastructure, and that infrastructure looks as follows. So if you look to the bottom left corner of that wheel, and there really isn't a starting point or an endpoint because it's very cyclical and intertwined, but if you look to the bottom left of that wheel, you'll see dignity sessions led by district facilitators. We have volunteer staff members who said, yes, I want to be a dignity facilitator. So they have gone through some intensive training with a consultant to learn lots of things. What does it mean to approach professional learning around dignity? How to engage somebody in an empathy interview where you're really listening to the other person to find out life from their perspective? So lots of training and professional development for those facilitators, who then co-develop professional development sessions for our larger staff on our professional development days. So those are sessions led in their buildings by their peers who had had that facilitator training around dignity and belonging. So that represents that bottom left portion of this infrastructure. When we move, I guess, up to the upper left corner, and you look at those student, staff, and parent dignity teams, those are larger, I would say, whole group, quarterly, maybe community D teams, we call them D teams for dignity teams. And what the purpose of those is, is collective learning. For example, quarterly, we will have the community dignity team to come together so that community members can sit and engage around some of those very same topics that our staff is engaging in. Or we might have a larger staff dignity team that isn't specific to a given building, but is more representative across the entire district, and then there is a parent dignity team. These teams were done via application and interest, and then they engage quarterly, as well as one student group also across the district, parent permission and volunteer. And those students engage in those good conversations about what does it really mean to have dignity and belong in LSR seven? And then we moved, each and every one of our districts, our buildings in the district has a D team in their building, and their charge is to identify a way that they would like to grow in the realm of dignity and belonging for their school. So they created a D team plan, they looked at all sorts of data, they looked at data from surveys, they looked at data from their staff, and then they engaged in those empathy interviews in which they asked different groups in their building to really talk to them about their needs in their building. And then they developed a D team plan to help grow and implement improved dignity and belonging in their buildings. And that looks like everything from increasing clubs and activities, to some more focused work and book study and professional learning around different topics. And then the final piece is the larger community dignity discussions as a larger portion of the infrastructure. And that is some of the work that Ms. Sanders has recently conducted with our World Cafe, and we hope to do that again, in which there was an open invitation to our community, whether you have students in the district or not, to come and engage in small group conversations around what does dignity and belonging mean in our community, not just in R seven, but in Lee Summit in general. And this last time, very awesome, she had a graphic designer who was a graphic note taker, and as a result of this session, there is an image that is available, I think, right now on the website, if not, we'll be, we'll get it there, which is a graphic image of that graphic note taker's summary of what she heard that evening across the conversations. So again, lots of detail here, but the intent is to communicate to y'all and to our community that the framework is about ensuring dignity and belonging for each of our students, staff, community members, and families, so that when you come to R seven, you know that dignity and belonging guide our work.
Excellent, thank you. Go ahead, I think we'll do both, and then we'll do questions.
Okay, yeah, great. I'll kind of add to that, share a little bit about the status of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission that the city has put forth. The mayor and the council established a 15-member citizen committee. I see Chairman Gray here. He chairs that commission, citizen commission, 15 member. What what has been delivered so far is a mountain of work went into a community assessment. That was one of their first work products to come out of the commission, and that was delivered to the city council on September 13th of 22, 19, or 2022. So just recently. So that was, that's a needs assessment for the community. Numerous stakeholders participated in that through surveys and focus group sessions and things of that nature. So that has been completed. In addition to that, there's a statement of findings that goes along with that assessment report. That was all done in conjunction with a consultant, Hicks, Carter Hicks, to deliver that that work product. Where we're at today, where the commission's at today in progress is drafting a vision statement that includes best practices for DNI, developing proposed action plans to bring forward, including educational components for DNI. We anticipate right now that that work, we, the commission, I should let you know, the commission is working with Dana Cutler. She's an attorney well versed in the DNI environment to put together this action plan. The DNI commission, working with Dana, will bring forward those recommendations, this action plan, to the mayor and the council for their consideration. So that's the, that's the goal. Right now, it's anticipated that that action plan would be delivered in September of 20 of this year. There, there's another mountain of work with this implementation. There's subcommittees, Business Community Subcommittee, there's a Culture and Arts Subcommittee, there's Youth Families and Education Subcommittee, and Health and Wellness. So the commission has subdivided into subcommittees that all this work is being undertaken to develop, develop this action plan. The goal of the, some of the deliverables from the action plan should have a guiding statement that reflects the vision of the DNI of the City of LS, goals and objectives that could be achieved within a five-year timeframe. Right now, we're talking, the commission's talking about, there's going to be some quick wins, and there's going to be some other initiatives that are going to be more midterm, but then there should be some stretch goals that should be achieved, or we should be challenged for. Actions that may be taken to implement the plan, annual performance measures, and ways that we could track our progress within DNI work, and then recommendations on necessary resources in order to move that forward. In addition to that, the DNI commission recommendations and action plan to the city then, there's, there's a requirement in the, in the resolution that then the city, the city manager's office, would look at that from a fiscal impact statement, and then also the resources to confirm with the consultant, with the commission, what things would, what kinds of staff and resources would need to be put in place in order to be successful. So we're excited about that work. Actually, I can tell you, the DNI commission is already talking about the opportunities to collaborate with the school district and with the students. We've heard about SCA now as well. We know the chamber is doing some DNI work, so the more the merrier, right? And that will, that will shape this community in many ways as we come together on on this work. So that's a quick update from the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, see if there's any questions.
Sure. I see Mr. Alan Gray, former councilmember, is the chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. He's here. Thank you for your work and all the progress. Last year, they did a presentation at this meeting, wasn't it, last year and one year ago? So that was excellent. Questions for the school district or for the city? Yes, councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor. So I thought, in the name of diversity and inclusion, I wanted to bring up, and I thought this would be a good opportunity for the school board to maybe address an issue here of late. So all, again, all in the name of equity and inclusion here has been the basis of this subject. I would love to hear, as many would, about their opinion as, excuse me, as to why we are not banning pornographic books. And we've heard that it's all in the name of diversity, inclusion, and acceptance of... So my question is, if you're not going to stand up for that, and you're going to leave those in there, are we going to allow for or require a parental permission slip to be signed? Because I feel like in all of this, with this issue, if you're going to leave them in, you're leaving the parents out of the equation. And as a parent, I better be the one to know everything that's going on in my child's schooling, life, and they can make their own decisions when they're 18, respectfully. So I'm just curious, I thought it'd be a good opportunity when we're doing some Q and A, just to hear, you know, because I did see in a Kansas City Star article, actually right before I came here, that, you know, some view this as it's a kid's choice whether or not they want to to view this book. But with kids, they're, they're not given choices that are beyond their capability. We do not allow them to do certain things till they're 18, till they're 21. And so with that in mind, I don't feel like it should be their choice, and this is a grown-up choice, that should be a parent's decision. And so I'm just curious, the approach that we're going to take, because all we hear is people complain about it, and I thought this would just be a good opportunity to hear, what is the plan of action? What are the true feelings? Are we, is this acceptable? So I would love to hear some comments on that.
So I would say certainly what I would lean into would be the board policy that would guide our work. So we have established Board Policy KLB, which is a path for any community member, family member or not, to raise concern about a given title in any of our libraries or instructional spaces. And when Board Policy KLB is completed, as I think we know, or Benny may know, we've had some forms completed recently, then the district will work through that process. And Board Policy KLB calls for team members, including teachers, community members, students to review the text, look at that with regard to instructional choice, look at that with regard to, is it a student choice? Is it in the library? Is it instructional? Stay in line with the KLB process. One of the difficulties with asking board members in a public forum for a thought on a particular book or a particular process is that within that KLB process, our final appeal level is the Board of Education. So in order to stay true to that policy, we have to ensure that our board members can remain neutral in their stance with regard to Board Policy KLB while we have open appeals going on.
Right, but what I'm saying is that there's no neutrality, either you're for pornographic books or you're not. So my question is just, are we for it or are we not?
I think I would refer back to, I think I would refer back to Board Policy KLB and the limitations that that would allow our board members to do. And then probably I would need to turn it over to the board president or Dr. Buck with regard to guiding the board decisions.
I will add, the definition of what a pornographic material is, is very specific, and to our knowledge, we have nothing that fits that bill. There is a...
So you're saying the book that was being read the other night was not pornographic, when it describes a situation of how to have sex with another man? I don't care if it was a man and a woman, it doesn't, that does not matter. So how is that not pornographic, being read when it's describing how to do an act and what it felt like and what it looks like? I guess maybe we describe pornography differently, but that's pretty base.
I'm using, I'm using what the law says is pornography, so that's, that's what I would go for.
I think we need to also use some, I don't know, okay, so in the, one of the first slides, you said, some of your mission statement was serving students, staff, and community with integrity and care. Where's the integrity in keeping that for our students to see? Over-sexualizing our students? I just don't understand, and I think a lot of the community would love to hear your opinions instead of voicing concerns at the board and never hearing a word from any of the board members.
So councilmember Hodges, we have a process, we have 20 different committees who are going through those 90 different titles. They're hoping to finish as many of them by the early March as they possibly can. So I cannot intercede because I'm not on those committees, I receive the recommendations. I cannot supersede their board-driven goal or their objective of reviewing these and making a determination.
Sure, so there was already a book that was a complaint that has been voted in from the last board?
Excuse me, as a sitting board member, I would like to address this since you're asking from board members, correct?
Sure, absolutely.
The policy that has been quoted and has been stated by the person that is presenting, I stand by that statement. That's, that's my position as a board member. I also do not feel comfortable conducting board business in this meeting. This is not the opportunity for that. The opportunity for us to do that as a board is when these complaints come through us, to us, they go through its process, the board then reviews them, and then we make a decision in our board meeting at our dais.
Right, well, the reason I ask is because those decisions that you guys are making and the publicity that that gets affects our job as people who represent the city as a whole. So that's why it's our business too, because, and that's why I'm asking, because it represents who we are. And if I'm going to move to a city, and I've seen them in the news, or they've been controversial in their school district, I guarantee you that that's not the city that I'm going to choose, and that's not what we want to be known as. So that's why I ask those questions.
With all due, with all due respect, councilwoman...
Let me, let me jump in, I'll let you, I'll let you finish, and then let me jump in.
Thank you. With all due respect, councilwoman, I agree. We all have the same constituents, we all have the same stakeholders, we're all equally are invested, and this community is invested. And I don't think no one around this square, half-square, whatever, would disagree. The point is, is that there's a thing that's called order. In order... And order is for us to follow the policy that's in place as a board, and then if we want to change that policy, then the board also have that liberty to change the policy. But currently, the policy states that there is committees that will review those books, they then will make recommendations to the board, and then the board at that time will review those books, and then we will make a decision. And I'm asking you, and I'm asking this in full community, to allow that process to take its course, and then we can be able to move forward. But also, as a district, please understand, that we always have our students and their interests at hand. We know parents do, but also as board members, and also as community representatives, we keep our students as the center of conversations. So, you're right, while the community may be having debates and all those other things, students is what our focus is, and that's what I would like to continue to hear, of the great work that we're doing as a city, the great work we're doing as a school district, and that we can move forward. Thank you.
And so, I think what I can do to bring, we need to close it out, but process, I'm a process person. Mr. Dunning, city manager, is a process person, and we have our processes, public hearings and such, and we have to follow them as well. So, we can understand that, and the questions, the point of the evening is to be able to build relationships, and be able to talk to each other, and have civil discussions, not just here, but maybe even a phone call after the meeting, or, you know, one-to-one with someone later on to understand. The key, though, the key, though, is, is the process fair? We just have to make sure the process is fair, and that's all we would ask as councils, make sure that we follow the process, that it is thorough and fair, and I think, you know, just, it's the same on our end. There's some really brutal meetings at the city council level, when you've got a room full of citizens that are passionate, and we're trying to make decisions, and all we can do as council members is follow the process, and ultimately, we might have to make a tough decision, and it does get tough. But let's, I think it's fine, Councilmember Hodges has asked the question, you can see, we have passion on our side of this, as council members, just like you do, and the key is that we, and once we get, leave this room, we allow you to do the process, but you, but hopefully, you keep a phone on for us, so that we can make a phone call to you and let you know how we feel personally, because we do represent those same citizens, and I think that's where I'm trying to get at, is, it's hard, because I think you all know, I get asked nonstop about school district stuff, and I constantly have to say, that's not my lane. I want, I support the school district, but I can't speak for the school district, all I can do is be a good partner, so, is that fair, President Campbell?
Mayor Baird, I'll just add, we've clearly heard from Dr. Buck and from Dr. Barker, we definitely will be following the process, so I can assure everyone on the council that, and I think you all have my phone number, the door is open, so feel free to, happy to have conversations, and I think that's important.
Okay.
Appreciate the question, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's take a break. Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. We're going to tag-team this next part, but I was going to just give the big picture as far as population growth and development, isn't that where we are? Yes. So, I think we all know that the residential and commercial growth in our community has been extremely amazing, spectacular, in many ways. It always creates challenges, because we talk about services and infrastructure, and you talk about stormwater, we also have sewer issues, and transportation, and more. But I'll tell you, we've got some great highlights in our community that are fun to talk about, that we're very proud of. I think Streets of West Prior is always a nice place to start, just because everybody's over there using, eating at one of the thirteen, I think, restaurants that they have, so Streets of West Prior, the most recent additions are Shake, I'm sorry, Crack Shack and Via 313 Pizzeria, am I saying that right, or is it 313? 313. It's, it continues to grow, it also is offering some really high, high-end townhomes on the backside, and then Summit Orchard, where Cooper's Hawk opened this last year. That's just an amazing development, because of the retail options, from Aldi's to the different stores there. Of course, they also are adding some more of the nicest apartments in town, with the most luxurious amenities, so that's Summit Orchard. The 150 corridor, on the south side of Lee Summit, there is just a lot going on, and there's so much going on from retail to senior living. We passed the senior living, but there's also a lot going to happen at, possibly happen at Ward and 150. So, if you're interested, tune into some future city council meetings. Shamrock Golf Course, there's a conceptual that was put in front of the council, just a very entertainment-type of development, where they're talking about a Top Golf-type of facility with a pickleball facility, with soccer-type of small soccer venue, and then a fieldhouse in partnership with the Park and Recreation. I mean, it's pretty amazing, if they can pull it off, and we do have issues, it's all conceptual, there's access issues and more, but they would have residential components as well on that one. The new Longview areas on the west side of town has seen some really nice residential approvals for homes in the last year, year and a half. One thing that's, the city's council has approved numerous CIDs, Community Improvement Districts, that have really helped clean up some of our shopping centers in the community. It's really helped, like, the aesthetics of the 50 Highway Corridor. You know, that's, so many people travel on that 50 Highway, and we want to continue to work on that corridor and make it look nice and beautiful, and it's really tough to do when you have shopping centers that are deteriorating and falling apart, so there's been some positive movement that way with the CIDs. The 50 Highway Corridor going south on 291, later you'll hear about the 291 North, which you all have been a part of, the partnership there at 50 and 291, but on the south side, there's just, there's just a lot of talk about things that are coming and potentially going to happen along there, developments and such, nothing that is really something that's gone before council, but I just know that there's a hub of activity there, and I do think, over the next few years, you'll see changes. And then, the big one is the PRI, Property Reserve, Inc., the 4,200 acres that we've been talking about for quite some time. Our staff has been in deep conversations with the representatives for Property Reserve, Inc., PRI, and about, for a memorandum of understanding. So, how are we going to move forward with them? In this memorandum of understanding, our attorneys are working with them, with regard to making sure that we're going to figure out the infrastructure, but also, just keep in mind that we are trying to look out for the school district, and of course, our parks. We're trying to say, we need you to, they need to be at the table, they need to be engaged, they need to be worked with, as far as our community partners. So, we are, we're definitely looking out for you in that manner, and that's going to all develop over the next thirty years, and they can only sell so much in tranches, but it's getting, it's getting real serious. And then, Discovery Park, I think you know a little bit about that one, that's the Tudor Road, right beside Unity Village, it's one of the largest developments in Missouri at a $1 billion price tag right now, as far as the cost to the developer. It's going to bring a Riverwalk-type community with 660,000 square feet of commercial, including retail and office, two hotels, including a Marriott and a Hilton, as well as entertainment venues, and it will bring quite a bit of multifamily as well, 2,000 units there. And of course, I would like to end with the downtown Farmer's Market Plaza and Farmer's Market. It's now full steam ahead, with final approvals for architects and construction contracts in place, so, hey, the public component of this is on track. We are going to, you're going to see a lot more on that over the next year. So, those are just, you know, the highlights, there's so much more. Remember, I talked about one and a half billion in new construction over the last five years, so there's a lot to hit on, but I will leave the details to staff. So, Mr. Josh Johnson, he's the one that is in front of city council almost every single week, just about every single week, you know, giving us guidance and his expertise, so Mr. Josh Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Baird. See if I can work the AV here. I'm Joshua Johnson, I'm the Director of Development Services. What I have for you tonight is some data that we really derive off our permits that are submitted through the Development Center, and Development Services is all about private development, right? And so, once something comes through here, and a permit's issued for, let's say, a single-family home, very certain that's probably going to get constructed, and so we use those permit numbers to project population, to look at future growth. I've also got some permit numbers and projections here as well, to go through with you tonight. Then I've got a map of our activity throughout 2022, for both residential development and commercial development. So, this slide, what we're going through here, this is our population, I went back historically to 2002, and then projected forward five years to 2028. As you can tell, that's a pretty steady line, I would say. We have regularly grown as far as population, if you look back at the permit numbers and the data. Again, projections come with a grain of salt, of course, but I would say this is a pretty conservative look at this number, and it fits in line with our recently adopted comprehensive plan. We can drill down into this a little more with this slide. You can see a pretty steady rate of growth, and that's really what our projections are showing there. Our population is derived in years where we don't have a census, from our permit data, our single-family, and our dwelling units from multifamily, about how many people per dwelling unit we have. That number is going to shrink over time, is what the general national trends are showing, but right now, we're at about 2.4 people per dwelling unit. This is our major categories of permit activity here. 2021 was an anomalous year, I'll say, for single-family permits, but what goes up must come down, and so, I think with the economic factors we're all familiar with, what you see in 2022 is that kind of downward trend. I wouldn't expect that to continue, we've had that average, as you see there, is about 350 homes per year. And again, with multifamily, you see a pretty, kind of a seesaw effect, in 2019, and in 2020, we had a pretty high number of multifamily permits, and then leveling out at that kind of 300 average. Commercial valuation, as Mayor Baird was talking about, the over-billion dollars in valuation over the past few years, as you can see there, last year, pretty healthy at a value, not direct permit numbers, like permit fees, but the valuation of the projects that came through Development Services, around 85 million. And so, we're averaging about 50 million there, and obviously, as inflation grows, so those numbers will grow, with cost of building materials going up, things like that. Wanted to end on a couple maps, these are locations of major residential projects throughout the city. Now, if you're familiar with where the PRI ground is, here in the north part of town, and then through this swath here, you can see we're getting pretty healthy residential development everywhere that we can, and we're even getting some projects in our established areas of town, in either infill areas or previously undeveloped areas of town. If anybody has any questions, wants me to pause, please let me know, and we can work through Mayor Baird for those questions. Okay? Finally, our commercial developments. As you might expect, they're along our major commercial corridors, as Mayor Baird pointed out, along Highway 50 there, 291 South, and then up through this 470 corridor, we have just had major development through there over the past few years. One of our four project managers has done all those, and it's been quite good for consistency, consistent development, up where that Sky Zone is, you've seen various businesses go in there, the Sano, the physical therapy clinic, that area, has just been growing and growing at a pretty steady rate. That's really the highlights of what I wanted to hit, I just wanted to talk about our trends, what we're seeing through the Development Services Department, and how we expect that to grow in the future, and happy to answer questions if you have them, thank you.
Yes, questions? I know that you all, as a school board, get to see the, you have a demographer, basically, full-time, you're constantly monitoring population growth, so you're quite familiar with those types of things, and we just have to, we just look at it from a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan perspective, and it's all about, like we mentioned earlier, it's all about process, there's a lot of transparency with the city, we have multiple public hearings, we have one at Planning Commission, but also at the city council, which is, you know, at least, I think our attorneys would say, is above and beyond what statute or Missouri requirements are. So, there's a lot of public input as far as opportunities to come in and voice your opinions. Plus, we also have set quite a few ordinances that expand when someone wants to put a development in, what's the square, how many linear feet, and then we've expanded that above and beyond the state requirements, so we, you want to give those numbers?
Sure, so the state, can you guys hear me? The state only requires a notification 185 feet from a property's boundary. In an effort to increase public engagement, we increased that to 300 feet about two years ago, and we also started requiring developers to hold a neighborhood meeting when they're about midway through their process, so that's what we've done to foster better public engagement.
We also, you know, developers will want to ask, you know, what they can do, and it's like, we want to make sure that you talk to the citizens, we want to make sure that you are engaging, and we do, you know, voice our concerns if they haven't done that, and all of a sudden, we have a public hearing that's basically, or they've not done it in the best of good faith, maybe. The other thing that we've done is, you heard me say earlier, that we have conceptual plans, so, Mr. Dunning, before he was even city manager, I think he's the one that came up with, you know, one thing that would make it a lot easier is to get some conceptials, and have them come in and say, hey, what do you think of this, before we go spending, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to go through Planning Commission, and then come before the city for one big drum roll, to see if we get this passed or approved. So, we're able to give, as a council, we're able to give immediate feedback in these conceptual meetings, with regard to what our concerns are, you know, is it likely we're going to be receptive to the development? And so, it's really, really, really improved. It's almost like having another public hearing, so it's almost like we're having three public hearings, but even though it takes extra time, it's worth it, to me. Don't you agree, Mr. Dunning? Go ahead.
Wholeheartedly agree, Mayor. Excuse me. The other thing, I'd kind of clarify, Josh was representing construction valuation, that's not, that doesn't equate to assessed valuation, right? And speaking of assessed valuation, knowing that the way the county assesses property, it impacts the school district, all taxing jurisdictions, and very proud of city staff and LSR staff working collaboratively with the county assessor's office, to make sure that they are on top of new construction within the community, because it matters tremendously that they catch that and put it on the tax rolls when it's constructed, impacting our revenue stream. So, I did want to mention that.
And I think you're being, I think you're being modest, I think between the city staff and the school district staff, we've put a lot of dollars back into the school district and cities' pockets, because we have found so many discrepancies, and I am pleased that Jackson County is working with us, and so... All right, questions? All right, thank you, sir, great job. Where are we? President Campbell? Gee, the 291 North Interchange, yeah, I want to hear about this.
Thank you, and here to really just provide a brief update on the 291 interchange project. It's one I know we visited with you all a little more than two years ago, as the school district is a partner in this project, it's a very complex project, it's one that not only involves the school district and the city, but our state highway department, MoDOT, involves private development, and QuickTrip, and the Highway Patrol, and Office of Administration. And it has taken years for us to get to this point. The project is under design, it has been under design for the better part of a year. The design is on schedule, and I'll talk a little bit more about that schedule, the preliminary plans have been approved by MoDOT, the right-of-way, which is really that property transaction phase of the project... The right-of-way, which is really that property transaction phase of the project, is near a submittal to MoDOT for approval, and we expect a public meeting to occur late spring, associated with that kind of final reveal of the project before it moves into those final plans for construction. While initially, this total project, which is really two different phases, one is the interchange, roughly a $25 million investment. The other is the relocation of Highway Patrol Troop A, approximately an $18 million project, total $43 million improvement in this area that is not only partnered with you, but directly connected to Lee Summit High School. We had expected this project to start construction later this summer. We have run into a couple of issues. The funding, I want to make sure you are aware, the funding for the interchange is fully secured through a combination of state cost share dollars, city tax monies, whether it be a CIP, sales tax, our capital improvement program, or excise tax that we collect through development activity, water and sewer fees, as well as we have secured federal funds, Surface Transportation Program funds for this project. So, the $25 million is fully secured, and the city passed a TIF and other funding sources to help pay a share of the Highway Patrol Troop A relocation. And in fact, the city has $8 million into Troop A's relocation. And that's really where we have a struggle. We were hoping to go to construction. Highway Patrol would already be in a state of reconstruction at an alternate location up north by MoDOT, near Independence Avenue and Colburn Road, if you're familiar with those other government agencies and where they're located in Lee Summit. But the Highway Patrol building, due to inflation, has come in with bid estimates approximately $7 million over where they had a combination of city contribution and other state funding. And so, I believe the Office of Administration and the state was hopeful that they would be able to secure that balance, roughly $7 million, a little less than $7 million, to make that relocation happen and begin right away. With that delay, essentially, it has pushed this project off 12 months. And while the Highway Patrol continues to seek their funding gap, we were hopeful here just within the last couple of weeks that we would see a Governor Parsons budget recommendation that included that money for Office of Administration for Highway Patrol to relocate. I think everybody was shocked to see the absence of that recommendation. And so, I would ask if you have the opportunity to visit with any of our legislature to really stress the critical importance of this project for Lee Summit, for the schools, for our entire region, really, as it relates to commerce and student and just everybody's involvement for public safety and operations, and ask them, implore them to look for funding somewhere in their state budget to meet that Office of Administration gap, that $7 million. That's what we're looking for out of a $43 million project, is $7 million. The city has come to the table. R7 has even partnered with us to come to the table to make this happen. And if we can get them back on track, if they can get this into their budget, I believe Highway Patrol is eager to move forward with beginning that relocation, resuming that project this July. And that would put us back on track with basically a 12-month delay to our original schedule. So, that's a status update. What you see here were the, essentially, the approved preliminary plans for the project, just put into a more pretty graphic. And I'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Yes. Board Member Murdock?
So, understanding, obviously, the link that it took, obviously, for our two organizations to get these final plans done, you mentioned that it was $25 million for the road and it was $18 million for the station. Is the station now $25 million? If we're $7 million short, or it was $11 million and now it's $18 million?
It was estimated at $11 million when they began preparing the plan. So, Highway Patrol is still actively pursuing the design of the project.
And they're still committed to the land that they had secured to put the new station on, is that?
That is correct. We've entered into agreements with Office of Administration and Highway Patrol. All of our agreements are set, with the exception of a cooperative agreement with QuickTrip, and they're still very supportive. We just, we've had a little more time to negotiate that while we understood Highway Patrol has a funded gap.
Okay. And then, kind of related to that, with the preliminary state of the state and some of those recommendations that the governor just made, who are we, or what would the city of Lee Summit be wanting from the school district from a contact standpoint? Because even outside of the legislators, there's other people in Jeff City that probably need to be contacted in regards to this particular project. Is there a particular person that you would want the district to be in contact with?
I think maybe I'd defer to City Manager Dunning. We are preparing a list of what you would say are full-court press and who we intend to contact.
Okay. And maybe that would be just good from a shared standpoint, right? So that they knew the collaborative, the collaboration that we already had to try to get it this far.
That's correct. We'll call it an orchestrated effort. We have been in contact with Missouri Highway Patrol and O.A., their staff, to discuss, how do we solve for this and what's the recommendations? That's where direction was received, hey, it's time to call your representatives, to make them aware of how far we've come and what we need to do to get this across the finish line. So, we'll be preparing those speaking points. We can share that with the mayor and the council and others, because we will need to be reaching out to our elected representatives to help.
Okay. And then, my, kind of the follow-up to that would be, when was the estimate that came in so high? When was that actually done?
So, Highway Patrol provided that estimate. They had prepared a set of plans based on another facility built elsewhere in the state recently. They took that to the contracting community, and that's where they got a direct feedback on, your $11 million estimate was $7 million too low. If you were to go out to bid, this is what you could expect. And at that point, they pulled back from issuing the bid for the construction to occur. This was around November timeframe of last year, and decided to complete the design. And they firmly believe, and I believe they told us this in full confidence, that they thought they were going to get a governor's recommended budget that would support the completion of the project.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Michael, for those that are new to the board, since we talked about this in 2021, I know why you want to move this, but you might want to explain the safety and some of the data pieces you have and why this is a big safety issue for our students, staff, and community members.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. So, this is a critical junction within the city. There's a lot of support for business along the 291 corridor. It's a freight movement corridor. And it's also happens to be one of our most congested corridors in the city, and with that congestion, one of our highest crash locations. And so, there's a lot of safety components to this that we expect to mitigate. You got a lot of young drivers trying to navigate a congested area. Because of the existing configuration, the ramps and the outer roads are just too close in proximity for us to gain any additional capacity without us pushing them out further. And you've kind of seen us take this approach, working with the state at other interchanges. It kind of started, if you look way back decades ago, Woods Chapel experienced the same thing at its intersection with 291 or 470. We've done the same thing, working at the Chipman Interchange and moving Blue Parkway further away. A number of our interchange, you go through this kind of aging process. Prior designs today just aren't efficient. And so, for us to move the outer road, in particular, Blue Parkway in the north, it requires displacement of business. QuickTrip has been engaged in this process for many years. They've had an active interest in moving and gaining a rebuild site adjacent to their current location. So, they're still working with us in collaboration. Working with your staff, Dr. Buck, I think we found opportunities to improve access to Lee Summit High School, provide opportunities for not only creating better access to your parking, but even more parking through your project and the campus renovation with future phases that might occur after this is done. And then, in our agreement that we negotiated, like you said, over two years ago, there's other parts that we're exchanging. There's property down by Lee Summit Elementary School that's in possession of the city that would be of more benefit to the school district. And we feel that there's some swap of property and right-of-way that all occurred within that agreement to make this project happen. And so, we think it's mutually beneficial for you and for the city, obviously, for the state, because they're not putting in nearly the percentage of cost into the project that the city is putting forward into. And with that, hopefully, that answers some of your questions, but I'd be happy to answer others.
I would like to go back to what Board Member Murdock was saying about what could we do to move this forward as far as elected officials, for example. And I can say that there's some opportunities. President Campbell was saying that you have legislative, legislature people coming? Dinner Thursday night with representatives and senators from the state of Missouri. And then, the next morning, I believe they're going to be possibly at the legislative meeting for the chamber. And what I would say is, you know, what you need to know for sure first is that the state is sitting on $6 to $9 billion, depending on how you want to categorize it, of $6 to $9 billion for infrastructure. And we consider this infrastructure, the Highway Patrol should be considered, the building should be considered infrastructure. And so, I think staff was really, and I was really disappointed that it wasn't a part of the Governor Parsons State of the State address where he wanted to make sure this was funded. And I would just ask that the board take the opportunity to voice your concerns because it does work. You have influence. You represent, you know, 100,000 citizens or more. And so, they, just let them know that, you know, exactly what Board Member Murdock said, which is, we've worked so hard on this, and they know this. But let them know it's a priority. And what you'll find is, they'll tell you, if you ask enough questions, they'll say, okay, this is how we think we can get it done. It's going to be a few months from now. And we've been successful with them before. Council members and I have gone to Jeff City and asked for help, and we've had help from our representatives and senators. And we have influential senators and representatives. Of course, Senator Seerpoey, Representative Patterson, Representative Engel, they all are, have been there. They've moved up the chain, and they have influence. So, we need to take advantage of it. It's not always that you have these opportunities like that, and they're very engaged. You've got Representative Strickler and others. Let's take advantage of it. Let's unite and get behind some things. So, thank you. Oh, yes.
Board Member Sparks?
To Ryan's point, I just would like to see the collaboration of talking points and message around this $7 million, so that when we are having these conversations, that we're all saying the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been thinking about what we're going to talk about when we go next month as well. We know that that's one, but just other things that, they're sitting on a lot of money. And it needs to go towards federal infrastructure. So, it's just something that I want to talk to council about in the upcoming month. And when we do, we'll have staff, Mark Dunning, speak to Dr. Buck and let him know what we're talking about because you have to, you have to be engaged and you have to play the game. And so, we haven't decided what else we're going to be talking to them about, but we know this is one. Thank you. That takes us to Paradise Park. I saw some pretty pictures earlier of Paradise Park. I want to know what that was, all those pretty rainbow colors.
All right. Dr. Bonison's going to come help me with this as I pull this up again. And I think I'm coming up to this part. All right. So, Paradise Park, I can tell you that you heard early childhood, and inside the building, things we're not going to talk about right here, you heard there's going to be the Bass offices, Head Start will be in there as well. There'll be some community room space, kind of like you're in right now, that you could have meetings and such inside. We know that, though, it comes with 14 and a half acres and has a firehouse, has some outdoor amenities. So, we brought in thought partners from around the state and also took tours. So, one program, I'm going to tell you, that Mayor Baird actually kind of kept planting seeds, like, we need a hospitality program. So, you're going to hear a little bit about that. And then, Shannon Booth is fully on board with that. And then, the second part of that would be the Conservation Department, UCM, and also what we saw at Smeasel, if you've ever been to Shawnee Mission South High School, has really led us to a certain direction as well. So, I want to thank Kathy Nash and Shannon Booth and Frank Vogt and several people in this room, including Dr. Bonison, for helping us get where we're at, we are pushing forward with. And so, Dr. Bonison, you want to talk about two new programs that are going to be here? How it impacts high school kids, and one of them, how it impacts every elementary kid in our district?
Absolutely. So, this is a great example of, you know, how we can work together in the community. So, obviously, we know this was a treasured business for many years, and now, it will go on as a learning campus. And not only for early childhood, but also elementary and high school. So, in very creative ways. So, the Environmental Studies Program at Paradise Park is something that's set to be a regional model and maybe even to some degree, a national model in the partners who want to engage with us. So, the park space is about 14, 15 acres, and it will be returned to Missouri native land so students can learn about our wetland, woodland, and prairie habitats that we have in Missouri. The program will, as Dr. Buck said, also be an ag program. So, but it's not traditional ag. It is urban ag, permaculture. So, thinking of some of the biotech opportunities in the Kansas City area. So, in Kansas City, in the Midwest, we're known as an animal science corridor, a life science corridor. I think with this new facility, I've already talked with businesses who are very intrigued with this opportunity that I think could bring some commerce and business this way because there's education going on. And collaboration also with our post-secondary partners as well. UCM is very interested, already collaborating, and helping us with some equipment even now in collaboration with our elementary students, even the library that is across the way. There is being installed a small greenhouse even now, and also something called a garden keyhole, which has to do with understanding sustainability. So, we're very excited that this will not only impact elementary students in the fact that in the afternoon, elementary students will have a chance to come and do a science investigations and experiments that aligns with the current curriculum that they have within a classroom. But now, it is not just a lab science, it's now field science. And so, true science that goes on is both laboratory and field science. And now, students have the opportunity to see worms that are not just something they see in a book, but actually see them and actually put their hands on the science of nature. So, it's very exciting. And then, in the morning, we, again, are collaborating with our post-secondary partners, our industry partners that are really coming from all over. There was a story that happened. I was talking with my son, who lives in North Lee Summit, and the neighbor come across the street. And he was a Lee Summit North grad, and he talked about the fact that he became later, he was a city boy, became an ag major, and now, he's working with data science in agriculture. Huge, huge field. And he said, if I had that opportunity when I was in high school, speaking of the Environmental Studies Program, he said, I would be a lot further in my career. It would really set me ahead. And was excited about the opportunities and gave me his card and wants to be a partner with incredible opportunities with biotech, natural science. Since this program will be aligned to biology and ecology, but also agriculture, it opens up a world of career opportunities for students, funding opportunities through the state, because it'd be a career and technical education program, as well as certifications for students. So, student wants to go to college, there are routes and opportunities there. If a student wants internships, there are internship opportunities as well as certification opportunities. So, we're very excited about this. But again, it touches both elementary and secondary students. You see at the bottom of this picture, that's the old firehouse that used to be a station years ago. It's now repurposed to be a state-of-the-art lab that will have equipment that our students will use. And even possibly, we're talking with UCM, maybe even college students at night, that will help bring in some equipment that we, it would be difficult to get, but because of partnerships, our students will be able to have even better equipment. So, some neat collaborations because of this space. In addition to that, the Hospitality Tourism Recreation Management Program, a mouthful. There's a lot going on with that program. If you understand this industry, about 8 million people work in this industry. The Midwest is a wonderful place for this industry, being a place that's in the middle of our nation. Already even had some talk with even Bass Pro. If you know Bass Pro, they have in the state, something called Big Cedar. And with the environmental science and hospitality, they do both things with that program. And very. environmental science and hospitality, they do both things with that program, and very interested to see what we're going to be doing. But in this hospitality program, students will be able to get internships, again, dual credit opportunities, and certifications. So many ways for students to win in this program. What's interesting about this area is someone can just start with a certification, and then having a number of years of experience, they can be promoted very quickly into high-end jobs, becoming regional managers, making well over six figures without a college degree. It's quite amazing of the opportunities. And then with the venues that are at Paradise Park, we'll be able to utilize those things that are in place, the batting cages, the go-karts, and then also the mini golf. Now, this is not a business that the school is running, it is an educational program, so it will be in line with the, the education that we'll be doing for students. But it will, in the future, open up for opportunities for the public to engage. So it'll take us a while to get there, but some incredible opportunities for students that not only there at Paradise Park, but students will be working within the community, probably downtown Lee Summit, and other, I know Paragon Star and other organizations are very excited about this opportunity.
I'll add to that, you were talking about partnerships and asking for help with your legislators. You know, I can tell you that going to Jeff City last year, we went with the Chamber, we interacted with the workforce development arm of our state government, and that led to them coming here and bringing all their folks to have a high-level meeting, to learn, to lead to President Campbell and Dr. Bonnison were in the room, I think Dr. Barker might have been in the room too, to us getting a hundred and eighty thousand dollar flight simulator, which is coming in.
Just, it's actually going to be installed tomorrow, or later this week, later this week. The snow has caused an issue.
Partnerships help us provide access to kids for things that other districts could not have. So we appreciate our partnership with the city, but UCM and the state as well, so.
If you're interested in hearing more about this program, there was a podcast that was done by LSR7, so there's a link here, but you can go to LSR7 Podcasts and hear more information, even from a student's point of view as well.
Thank you, thank you so much. Excellent. Are you still going to call it an edutainment center?
The edutainment part is actually the outside, when you go to left Paradise Park, if you remember going in, on the left side, that's the edutainment center part of it, all that on the outside is staying. So there's classrooms going to be in the middle of it, classrooms on the right, so if you think of the old, the bumper cars and the climbing walls, there's a second floor built in, so there's classrooms above and below on that space.
I raised my kids in that place.
We hope a lot of people raise their kids in that place in a different way.
Okay, this is Mr. Joe Snook, the Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you very much. Mayor Barrett, President Campbell, thank you very much on behalf of the Park Board. We appreciate the opportunity to provide a quick update. As I was sitting in the back throughout the evening, my old football coach, his voice kept ringing in my head, you know what he used to tell me, I was a linebacker, and he used to say, "Snook, be quick but don't hurry." So that's what I'm thinking on this presentation. Snook, be quick but don't hurry. How about that? So before I get into my presentation, a couple of things I want to mention real quick. One of the, one of the things we've been doing over the last several years, I think has had great benefit to our community, is a lot of neighborhood park redevelopment, and we've done parks throughout our park system, and they, a lot of times they go unnoticed except for the people around the neighborhood park. But we just completed a neighborhood park renovation, it opened on Friday, and it's in one of your schools' backyards, and that's Pleasantly Park, which is right next to Pleasantly Middle School, Pleasantly Elementary, which by the way, the students of both those schools are thoroughly enjoying that new park. So, so consider this a formal invitation, we have a ribbon cutting on Saturday, February 11th, at 10:00 a.m. We're hoping it doesn't snow, I can handle the cold, but the snow may make it a little more challenging, but we plan to have hot cocoa and chocolate and, you know, and do the ribbon cutting and have everybody enjoy. So if you can come out, enjoy that moment with us, we'd appreciate it. So last fall, the Park Board went through a process to update our current master plan, or our, our most recent master plan, so we updated it in the fall. It's a pretty extensive document, you're welcome to go out and review it, you can find it on our website, lsarks.net, and you can get that full document, but I just thought I'd give you a few highlights from that. We had, we had well over a thousand Lee Summit residents respond in the survey, we had upwards of a hundred people participate in community input processes, so we were very happy with the turnout, very happy with the feedback. So the first priority or goal that we heard and we made note of is set aside land for future parks and trails. People are very passionate about their parks and trails, just like they're passionate about their schools, just like they're passionate about all the government services that are provided by the city. And so what we heard, and I think you've heard it tonight, there's a lot of development going on, there's a lot of housing going on, there's a lot of people coming, can we make sure that we set aside space, green space and facilities and trails to, to serve our future population, our current people? And I will tell you, the one thing that I could not build, there's two things I can't build fast enough, trails and pickleball courts. But we're going to keep trails number one, they're still number one, at the, at the time, at the moment, but maybe pickleball pass. Second one, is make sure that we're creating destination parks, so that it's part of, part of the city's economic development strategy, and you're going to hear about a project that we have master planned, that I hope that we'll be able to do sometime in the future, I think will contribute to that economic development. Create entrance parks in, next to our regional parks, we have several county parks, and one of the ideas is, can we create a neighborhood park that then would abut to the regional parks, so it kind of be a gateway into those regional parks. They might not experience those regional parks as much, but maybe we can create a gateway, so that was a priority for us. Create unique facilities and programming, and make sure we're partnering with our agencies. We can, we work hard to find partners, I think you'll hear me mention a couple of projects with partners, opportunities, maybe for the school district, as well as our private sector community. Create, or connect our parks. Again, this goes back to trails, so one thing we heard loud and clear was, the people, our community wants to make sure that our parks are connected to our schools, are connected to our commercial, are connected to their neighborhoods. So we need to continue working in conjunction with Public Works and, and our other city partners to make sure we're creating that connectivity, so people can go throughout our community without needing to drive a car all the time, right? And then preserving the Lee Summit high-valued resources, a lot of resources in our community, to make sure that if we can, as a park agency, that we are identifying those, and that we're working hard to make sure we're preserving those. Probably one of the most important comments that we heard over and over again was maintenance of existing parks, and I think this goes back to the redevelopment of our neighborhood parks, and how important that is. And we know that the people, our citizens, love our parks, but they, they like the new stuff, but it was very clear, Joe, make sure you're taking care of what we already have, right? Don't let that deteriorate, so we're going to continue to do that. And then finally, make sure that we ensure that we have the funding sources to make, to take care of everything, and to do these wonderful projects. And the funding needs to be diverse, needs to be sustainable, we need to be working with partners to make that all happen. So those were just some highlights of the master plan update. So the first, I get asked about three projects pretty regularly, so the first project I'll mention is the Resource Recovery Park. You may know where that is, kind of on the southeast side of town, and pretty close to Sunset Valley, Sunset Valley Elementary. The city approached us, some of the city staff, some, some years ago, asked us if we might be interested in looking at the possibility of converting the landfill into a park. And so my staff and I, we toured other landfill to park projects around the country, there are several. Two of them in the United States called Mount Trashmore, I may be one of five people in the United States, has been to both Mount Trashmoors in the United States. And they are pretty cool, there's some pretty cool projects out there. We went ahead and completed a master plan, we've talked with the city council, the mayor mentioned the joint meeting with the Park Board, I think we got some favorable feedback. But I think this might be a project that you'll see the Parks Department wanting to pursue, hopefully in the near future. This does connect close to Sunset Valley Elementary, I think there's some great collaboration opportunities. It also is close to East Trails Middle School, and it also is close to Sylvia Bailey Park, which is a property that we own. And so there'll probably be trail connections that allow for easy access to that facility, but there's about two hundred plus acres there, about eighty of that is the actual dome. This is one project that I think could really lead to some economic development, I think it could be a destination park. The parks we visit around the country were exactly that. I know you think people are going to go to a landfill, but yes, if you build it and you put the amenities there, they'll come. So that's just kind of a quick shot of some of the stuff we're looking at, some of the amenities you might see there, an Alpine Slide, a tubing hill, not just for winter, but a tubing hill that can actually be enjoyed throughout the entire year. We're probably looking at some passive recreation like disc golf, maybe a downhill bike flow course that starts at the top, works its way all the way down to the bottom of the landfill. We also are looking at a very nice play area. Fitness will probably be an important component of this park. At all the landfills we went to, they had a very unique feature, usually had some kind of stairs going up the side, and when we were in Virginia, it was packed, we were there for a couple hours, middle of the week, middle of the morning, I was like, is it like this all the time? They said, yes, people just running up and down the dang stairs. I know it sounds weird, but I get it, I'm a fitness guy, I get why you do that. And so creating a pretty significant and unique fitness opportunity. And I've been to the top of the landfill several times, and the view is spectacular. It is truly spectacular. I believe you can see about thirty-five water towers throughout the region from there, you can, on a clear day, see downtown Kansas City, so it is magnificent, so I think people will want to get to the top. So anyway, that's a quick update on the landfill, I get asked about that one a lot. I mentioned pickleball courts once before, but yes, we are looking at addressing additional outdoor pickleball courts. We are hoping to build an outdoor pickleball complex, you know, hopefully in the next twelve to eighteen months, we're still trying to secure a location for that outdoor pickleball court complex, we have funding set aside for that. But pickleball is a very popular sport, the pickleball players will tell you it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States, that is true. So if you're a pickleball player, we hope to be able to address the outdoor pickleball court needs of our community in the near future. The last item I will mention is a field house. I get asked about the field house a lot, the mayor mentioned a development at Shamrock Hills Golf Course. We are talking with that developer at this point to maybe have the field house at that location. People ask me, what is going to be in the field house, what is a field house? Basically, it's a big box, hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand square feet, primarily hardwood courts, could be some soft surface in there, like turf, probably will have a fitness component. We'll be working with community partners to determine what the final programming of that facility will be, and I think, I know I've had a few conversations with some of the school district employees, there may be a desire, a need on the part of the school district from the athletic side of the house, that there could be some space that they could use. So anyway, some of the bigger projects that we have going on, be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully I was quick, but I didn't hurry.
Well, we could talk about parks all night long. Mount Trashmore, that name, is that, is that the, what was the name of the trash heap in Fraggle Rock? Was that, yeah?
I remember Fraggle Rock, I do not remember the name of the trash heap.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering.
I could almost sing Fraggle Rock right now if you...
No, we, we've had a great year with the parks, they've had numerous, they're moving forward on numerous initiatives, not just this one, but the Shamrock thing is, has been a surprise, and I'm just glad that you're entertaining all possibilities and dreaming big like you are with Mount Trashmore. So, thank you.
Awesome, now moving on to a really fun topic, coming up in your future. April 4th, 2023, we've got some items that are going to be on the ballot. So we've talked a lot, and I hope council members that you feel as excited about a lot of the educational opportunities and facilities and learning that we've talked about, because I get excited about it. That's part of the fun of being a board member. Part of this has to do with our staff, and what we do for our staff around getting that engagement and that learning going for our students. So on the ballot, we will be having a levy transfer. The goals that we talk about with our staff, attracting and retaining the very best staff. You know, we have accolades, staff accolades that we hear almost every month, nutrition services awards, transportation awards, teacher awards, administration awards, all kinds of accolades outside of our district that our staff do as a part of their job, as a part of all of them being engaged in our students' learning and education. Over eighty-two percent of our teachers have advanced degrees. Our teacher retention rate right now is over ninety-four percent. We have staff that are very focused on the educational opportunities for our students. And with that, when we look at staff around these goals of attracting and retaining, there's really three things you can look at, benefits, culture and climate, and pay. Board Member Murdock put it really well a few months back when we were talking about benefits, as a three-legged stool. And it's really important that we look at all three of those legs when we're looking at staff. And so knowing that we are number one in the area of benefits in this region for our staff, but looking at salary, we're finding the reality. We're not keeping up when we look at competing metro districts in what we're paying our staff. And so it's very important, again, number one with our benefits, but in salary, we're not. So districts across the metro are focused on this as well. And over time, our district has dropped, and so now, when we look at other metro districts, we're about number seven, around teacher starting pay, as well as master level year fifteen teacher pay. Also want to point out, as Dr. Buck mentioned earlier, we, the formula for funding with the state remains flat, as well as we see over time, getting less funds from the state. So we really have to focus on our local revenue. And it's important that we do that, because close to seventy percent of our revenue comes from our local revenue. So like other districts and other employers, we are constantly competing for the very best talent to bring into our district and to keep in our district. And it's very important that we also understand that that pipeline is shrinking. So we know that less students are entering college in the field of education. So it's important that we have awareness of that now, and we're building for that now, and we're planning for the future around all of those things. And it's important that we do something significant at this time when we look at staff salaries. So what we're looking at is a levy transfer, very similar to what we did as a city in 2021. And again, the importance of a levy transfer is, there is no tax increase for our property owners in our district. So while we will ask the voters to transfer twenty cents from our debt service levy to our operating levy to allow us to do that, there is no increase in taxes for our property owners. And many districts around us, that's how they've been able to raise salaries as well, and so that's something that we're very excited to be putting on the ballot for vote. We do need voter approval. And when we talk about, what does that really mean? So we'll be moving that twenty cents from the debt service levy, so reducing what we're paying down on our debt, to the operating service levy, where we can then apply that money to staff salaries. And that's our goal, is to focus our intention on using that for salary increases. And what's the impact to the district? Well, significantly, we'll be able to make... Well, significantly, we'll be able to make a big impact on staff salaries. Does it impact our future bonding capacities? Yes. However, as a board, we asked really good questions thinking about the future because we sure wouldn't want to rob Peter to pay Paul. So we had careful conversations with Dr. Buck and Dr. Shelton and all of Dr. Shelton's team around that to make sure that we were mitigating that concern of if we impact our future bonding capacity, are we impacting the future of our district and our facilities? And through analysis, they gave us back answers that helped tremendously. So in looking at that long-range capital plan, Dr. Shelton had shared with us that we don't believe down the road that we will need that top bonding capacity. And so we, while we will have, I'm sure, bond initiatives that we move forward with within the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, we don't expect to need that top bonding capacity. The other thing is, we know that bonding capacity for us increases as the city grows and increases. And we live in a healthy, vibrant community that's growing. We've heard a lot of that this evening. And so that also will play into and increase our bonding capacity as well. So looking at the ballot language, I do want to share the bonding language says, we're asking our voters to approve that increase in the operating levy of 20 cents and that we will have the intention of decreasing the debt service levy by that same 20 cents. Again, ensuring that for our voters, for our property owners, there is no net increase to the overall tax levy of the district. So we'll be coming up for ballot on 4/4/23. And we do have a Building the Futures campaign that's co-chaired by Mike Allen and Susan Kaufman. So if you have questions around that, you could sure reach out to them or reach out to any of us board members as well. Do we have any questions around that?
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Edson.
Kathy, you've got the, the current starting salaries. What are you shooting for with the passage of this?
I think we'll be reviewing that. We don't have final numbers around that. Within our district, that'll be evaluated and that'll come before the board for approval. We do want to make sure that we've got this approved by voters because that will feed into what those final decisions look like. But great question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Well done. Okay, similarly, I'm going to talk about our April 4th ballot. However, I will just start off by saying that I remember a few years back, again, I was on school board, but I was also really active with the school district before that. And I remember being on the, you know, going to citizen advisory committee meetings. And the school district said, okay, here's a pot of money that needs to go, you know, here's, let's just say a million dollars that needs to be spread out amongst the school district to fix, you know, $25 million worth of issues. And we all sat in a room with all these wonderful citizens and stakeholders and tried to prioritize where to spend that, you know, that amount of money, even though it was, it was really not making a dent. But then the school district comes along and you guys put together this, this recent no-tax increase bond of 224 million. And you end up turning it into 60. I haven't figured that part out yet, but I understand. You leveraged it and have turned it into more, but the, what you did is you took a comprehensive approach, a very strategic, comprehensive approach and said, listen, it's, it's time to address these issues and get authorization to move forward with, you know, all of these different things such as Lee Summit High School. And that was huge. I, I mentioned it earlier. Because there was no other way to address it. It was just, there was just no other way to address Lee Summit High School. It was becoming that school and we couldn't have that. So then I see you got the robotics thing. I'm a big fan of the robotics, so I like to throw that out there every time. But also the Mason Elementary. I mean, Mason needed so much work and they were inside, you know, what do you call them, mobile homes and such. And you put together this plan and it was, it was very strategic and proactive. And that's what we want to do as a city as well. The last bond we did was for a couple of fire stations and, and a police headquarters upgrade. And it was, it was bite-sized, but it wasn't a long-term look at things. So the city has decided to put before the voters a no-tax increase bond initiative in which we would address public safety, emergency preparedness, and transportation. And every citizen and every district in our community will be touched by the investment we would make should the no-tax increase initiative pass. In the past, the city has, like in, I said, passed smaller ones. You know, we passed that one in 19 and we're just now beginning to build the fire stations four and five. So it, it, what it does is it gives the, the authorization for city staff, the experts, just like you've given Dr. Buck and his staff, the authority to, the citizens did with the passage, to prioritize these and get these in a timeline over the next 10 years. The previous stations that we had were in total disrepair and council members can go on and on. I mean, when I became mayor, they literally, council members dragged me to these fire stations and said, look, this is not, this is not acceptable for the city of Lee Summit. And we were not addressing it until after it was needing tremendous modifications and upgrades. The same goes for transportation. We have numerous roads that are at capacity or in need of repair. And our council gets stuck in public works meetings and debating over which street is more important than the next street, when both the streets need to be repaired. And some streets need to be expanded because of the tremendous growth that you've seen that's already put some of the roads at capacity. So we're going to get them in a queue. We're going to, we're going to, and it might change over time. You know, three or four years from now, something might move up because of development and the way things go. But the fact is, we're going to get authorization for certain roads to be built and repaired, certain facilities to be built. I can tell you this, that the bond would provide investment in our airport as it is in extremely high demand. And that would be a big benefit to our community economically. The bond would also enable us, and you'll see, there's three parts to this, but a comprehensive approach and an incredible alignment among our public safety departments and our public works. So police, fire, and our transportation departments would all be in a, we would put them all under a safety operations center that would be worthy of the high-quality public safety services that our city warrants when you're looking at a city of 105,000 people and our, our wonderful schools and kids and such that we need to be taking care of. So there will be three, the ballot will have three measures. It'll be, there will be a transportation. We have to, for the, it's a little bit different than the school district. We have to categorize them based on, on a comprehensive or, you know, cohesive alignment of, you know, what we're doing. So we had to put it under three different measures. One will be transportation, one will be public safety, emergency preparedness, and one will be facilities. So facilities such as City Hall that's, that's needing quite a bit of updating as well. So it is going to total 186 million if you took all three. One's like 74 million, one's 89, and one's like 70, 98 million, 74 million, and then 14 million. So there'll be three different questions, but if the citizens do this, then the city is going to be in a position to really make a huge impact on infrastructure and public safety. So April 4th, and I appreciate your time. Questions? Did I do okay, councilmembers? Okay. All right, well, the next thing is, get my order here. Okay, so this is the EDC thing, right? Is that next? Okay. So with the EDC, I'm not going to go back in time to yesteryear because there's so many civic leaders and stakeholders that have done great things through our community and they did it through the EDC. They started the chamber through the EDC. They started, they've, the EDC has backed initiative after initiative after initiative for the school district and for the city. The EDC has been some of our great, on the EDC has been some of our greatest strategic thinkers in this community over the last 30 years, 30-plus years. And they've made, helped make, helped elected officials make really tough decisions, including ballot initiatives and more. I can tell you that the time I can go back to though specifically that I'll just start with is things were not going like that over the last five years. To the point where the disengagement, the lack of a relationship with the city, and there was just not much happening there at all levels with, with council, but also at the, at the city level. The council was frustrated. We have an agreement that we renew every three years, a PSA, Public Safety Agreement. So in April of 21, so just what, go back 22, 21, just less than two years ago, we brought the, the EDC in as well as the downtown Main Street and we, who has a PSA and the chamber, and we said, hey, we need to have a conversation about the public service agreement and the performance because it's really dropped off. We're not being engaged. We don't know what's going on. And we decided to have a meeting and we decided to set new expectations in the public safety agreement. And that's what public safety, public safety, excuse me, that's what public service agreements are for. They're, they're contracts. They're service, contracts for services. And they have to have some kind of deliverable. They have to have some type of performance measure. Even if that performance measure or deliverable is reporting requirements or maybe it's just, you know, engage with the city, city council to have a positive relationship. So that's what we did and we put that in place. It wasn't that complex. And what happened over the next year was the, the, I don't know if, for what reasons, I can, I have all kinds of theories. I watched it happen before my eyes, but this EDC disengaged. They stopped having meetings. And they stopped meeting and talking to us. Meanwhile, you heard what we've been doing the last few years. We've been passing a lot of developments, new construction, making a lot of decisions, and it should be in alignment with the EDC. Now, we did decide to pull the funding last year. It would have been at the end of fiscal year, so June. We're having conversations in May and June and, and we terminated the agreement. And we're going to set, we set our sights on having a best practices study where we're going to look at, determine what other cities are doing successfully. Cities like us, cities that are suburbs, cities that are in metropolitan areas with, with our demographics. And with that, we're going to, we're going to see how they're spending their tax dollars. We're going to see how, how much they're spending in those situations. We're going to see who's doing it the best and what structure is the EDC under and what deliverables or performance measures are in the public service agreements. And once we have that, we're going to that study. I think we're, council will, will have discussions. So this is just me projecting a little bit. But I'm thinking that we're going to have site visits. We might do what you would consider an exploratory committee. We might have council members go visit some of these places that are doing things really well and let's ask questions. Let's go and do our, our own homework on top of the best practices study. And I would, when that time comes, I'm going to ask council, and if not me, it's going to be Mayor Potem Lopez. And if it's not Mayor Potem Lopez, it's going to be a council member tomorrow. If it's not councilman tomorrow, one of us, we're all going to talk about this. And we're going to say, hey, what about the school district? I mean, we've been putting a couple hundred thousand into the EDC, but the school district is also the second largest investor. And they need a public service agreement and they need to have input and they need to have buy-in. And we want to be good partners with them. So I would like a couple of board members, and I'll let you all figure out how you would, how you would choose those board members, to be a part of the exploratory committee so that we can come back here and build, build a great EDC. We have a great city. We have a great school district. We have a great parks department. We have a great downtown Main Street. We have a lot of greats in this community. And we're not going to settle for mediocre ever again. We don't need to. We don't, that's not our, that's not an option. So we're going to do something great. And I am guessing that we're going to probably, council members, don't get upset, but I think we're going to spend more than a couple hundred thousand dollars on an economic development organization. Because we want great, not mediocre and not even good. We want great. So we're going to go see who's doing it the best and we're going to do it better than them. And that's, that's the approach that we're taking. This is all going to happen fast. It's going to happen over the next four or five months. The last six months have just dragged on as we've tried to move through this, but things are in place. The, the contract has been signed. The best studies practices is underway. It has not been reported back to us. But I want to make sure, and I know the council probably feels this way, that you, the school district, are at the table when we're making these decisions. So that's where we are and we're going to, we're going to tackle this together. So. President Campbell, what do you think?
A process for committee assignments. So I think we would love to be engaged in a part of that. And so we'll follow our process in, in getting those assignments when, when you all say the word and, and you're ready as well.
I appreciate that. What about the rest of you? Do you have anything you want to keep in mind? Yes, Mr. Dunning.
I would just share that we're on target to have that best practices report delivered to the mayor and the council in April. So just from a timeframe perspective, that's, that's the goal.
All right. Thank you all. What's next? Do I stay up here or is it your, somebody else's turn? Oh, Dr. Shelton, you're finishing us off?
All right.
Dr. Shelton's going to be a closer, but it's going to brag again on partnerships with our police department, fire department. And I cannot thank Dr. Shelton enough for, we already, already had a great partnership, but it has increased tenfold after Dr. Shelton arrived.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Mayor, thank you. Just to continue with that, yes, we, we've had a great partnership and we continue to have a great partnership. So we have an emergency operations plan and our district, district and city has an emergency operations plan as well. The four components of that plan are mitigation, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. And so once a month, we get together with fire and police. There's a committee of us. We'll talk about those folks here in just a little bit. But every month we get together and we discuss those four components and the elements that we have in place, how that partners with the city, with the police, with the fire, with the city services. And in the event something would happen, how would we coordinate those events and solve problems as they're coming up? We do every month talk about what's going on in the city. What are the police seeing on the streets? What's fire seeing on the streets? What are we seeing in our buildings? How do, how do those carry over to, to one another so that when they see something, they can give us a heads up? As we see things happening in our buildings, we can deliver some of that information to the city and the services there. Which brings us to that communication and most importantly, that relationship. It is a wonderful relationship that we have. We have phone numbers. We have, and we're in constant contact with one another through calls and text and once again through our meetings. The team members that serve, Captain Murray was on the team. He's been reassigned within the police department. Now we have Captain, Captain Irvin back in the corner, Deputy Chief Manning from the fire department, Sergeant Stubbs, Sergeant Depew, Ryan Hall, our safety coordinator, Brett Potts, secondary ed, Heather Kenny over elementary ed, Katie Bergen, our executive director of public relations, myself and, and Dr. Buck. We get around the table and we talk. And that ongoing communication, that ongoing relationships help us when an event occurs, when a critical incident occurs, that we can hit the ground running. That takes, that takes an effect, if you will, through our SROs and our impact officers. Here, earlier this, this year, we did a significant tabletop activity where police and fire led the city through a tabletop activity that involved a Friday night football bleacher collapse at Lee Summit West High School. And we had to engage our emergency operations team from start to finish. It took us about three or four hours. It was exhausting for all of us. But once we got through it, what resulted in, I think, the, the But once we got through it, what resulted in, I think, the, the biggest outcome of that, of that activity was just the confidence, the confidence that we developed as a team to know that if something happens, no matter how significant or how minor, we're prepared and able to handle those events when they come. Also, what came out of that was our ability to coordinate with fire and police and outside agencies through that communication process and through that unified team that needs to, needs to be in place when we have an event like that. So it was well done. We appreciate the city, the fire and police organizing that for us, which then led us into how do we debrief and how do we go through an after-action review when we have an event? And as we've gone through, through this, the rest of the school year, you know, we have events that occur. Some are major, some are minor, but after each of those events, we debrief. We do an after-action review, what went well, what could have done, gone better, and putting more measures in place so that we're, we are more prepared than we were the day before. What we do on a day-to-day basis, and I'll say on a weekly or monthly basis with, at the building level and at the, at the department level, we have critical incident walkthroughs, and these are very simple events. At a staff meeting, we throw out two or three scenarios to our staff. This happens. What do you do? Let's talk about it at the table. Let's debrief about it, and, and kind of get in that mindset, that mindset of handling a critical incident if it were to occur. And there's just things you go through. We talk about the Oodle Loop process. You observe, you orient, you decide, and you act. And so we just constantly rehearse that so that in the event of a crisis, we can respond quickly, naturally, we stay calm, we show strong leadership, and so strong communication. Something we're doing, and Board Member Murdock brought this to our attention, and we have followed through with this in working with Deputy Chief Manley, an inter-agency cooperative agreement through MARK. MARK is working on this. We still have a few i's to dot and t's to cross, but that, that agreement is, is on its way. Things we're planning for in the future is our citywide response activity this summer, a large, large-scale event involving multiple agencies throughout the city, and we're looking forward to participating in that event as well. We have ACERT training. Each and every building goes through ACERT training, and that's a wonderful training opportunity for all of our staff to go through. Then, of course, we do building drills and rehearsals every month. Thank you. That was quick. Sometimes the closer is quick, you know? Three up, three down.
Dr. Shelton, may I add two things?
Yes, please.
One, you may have noticed last June at Hazel Grove Elementary, there was a lot of police there for a whole day. I think it might have been two days. They had SWAT training there. We're, we use, we allow them to use our facilities. We know we will benefit from that in case they would ever need to, but they also benefit in having a unique setting to, to practice. We will continue to do that. Two, that tabletop activity, I cannot brag enough about the training we've received from our police department ahead of time. That way, when we, probably had 50, 60 people involved in that tabletop for four hours. At the end of it, the feedback we, we received was, was the best I've ever seen anybody do, including a military facility the week before. So I thank you to our police department for training us up and continue to stay engaged with us. So in case something were to happen, we can do the best possible responses as we can. So thank you to Dr. Shelton. Welcome aboard, Dr. Irvin. Thank you to Captain Murray and, and as well as Manley.
Something we do at each of our meetings, we hold these, we hold our monthly meetings in different buildings throughout the district, and after each meeting, when we're done, we walk the building with that building principal and ask them, "What, what parts of your building most concern you? Where do you feel like we need to tighten and harden, harden our building?" And we go through, we walk through it, and we have discussions with the police and fire on how we can do that. Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done. So we're only going to be here just a few more minutes, so I'll get through this really fast, but I just need to do some legislative things. Are there any committee reports from council members? Okay. Council comments? Yes, you want to go first? Councilmember Prior? Yes.
So I was reminded during break of why I continue to advocate for children with dyslexia. So I just, our population, our student population is 17,783. So statistically, 3,557 of those children have dyslexia. We have 46 students currently receiving Wilson, which is a tier-three curriculum in our district. I would just, and, and we have, we have teachers, I think at every school at this, at this point, or almost every school, that are trained in teaching Wilson. So I would just love to see that process for qualifying for Wilson and all of the children that are essentially getting left behind. I'd love to see that process easier and changed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, yes, Councilmember Redson.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank the school district and the school board for hosting us tonight. You know, I'm a proud mother of four, and all four graduated from Lee Summit Schools. All four went to Hazel Grove. I love that school. So just thank you for having us tonight. And what I heard earlier was that our next meeting was going to be at Paradise Park on the go-karts. So that's what I heard. So thank you. I look forward to that.
What'd she say? What'd she say?
Paradise Park on the go-karts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, very good. All right, well, I know that we are going to go great places together. This means a lot. I promise you that if we do this next year, and I do want to do this next year, Dr. Buck, it was amazing, but we'll do everything we can to keep it like to three hours so that I can get you out of here because I want you to look forward to this, this night because I do. And it's, it's symbolic to our community. It's important for collaboration. You got to, you got to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. So just the fact that you came tonight, you know, there are times where board members or whether, when they come together like this, people don't show up. You all showed up. Councilmember Shields had to leave early because Felix, her new baby, needed her. So that kind of thing happens. Plus, you get paid the big bucks to be here this late, board members. So I do appreciate your time. It was a wonderful evening. Very proud of the school district, very proud of the city, but I'm very proud of the Lee Summit School Board and the city council. So thank you all for, for being here. I won't say that that has to be the last word if anybody wants to chime in. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Dunning, and then we'll adjourn. Oh, councilmember, oh, yes, President Campbell, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you, appreciate everybody's time this evening. To me, several words popped out. Trust, collaboration, and that's really what it's all about. It's building our relationship between the district and between the city, and that trust and collaboration is key to that. So thank you. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Yes.
Just real quick. Thank you so much. This will be my last joint city council, school board meeting because I'll be rotating off or going off the school board in April. And I just want to say that for the last several years that we have been doing these meetings, that it has truly been an honor to serve with each of you in this room. And you all have the best interests of our city and the best interests of our kids at heart, and this is the city I love and the school district that I absolutely love, and I will miss working side by side with you, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart and just keep doing the good work. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I promise I'll be brief. I had an abscess tooth yesterday, and when I walked in here, my eyes were dilated. It's been a tough week. There's not a whole lot more than I can add to what's already been said, and this is my third or fourth joint session. And again, there's not much more that I can say that it's already been said about how impactful this kind of a, of a joint session is. For those of you new board members, I, I hope you got something out of this, whether you're new to, to the school board or the council or have been through these before. I think we all gained something from this. And the last thing that I'll say is that I'm fortunate to, to be involved representing Lee Summit on the Mid-America Regional Council Ward, and I say that with so much pride. We had our board meeting earlier today, and Lee Summit regionally, and it makes me so proud every time I attend these meetings, is looked upon as such a high, high leadership impact city within this metro area. Missouri and Kansas, when, when I have the mayor of Overland Park or the mayor of Shawnee constantly remind me about how impressed they are with our city for whatever reason, school district being one, but our downtown, they come and visit our downtown on a regular basis. That's, gives me such a high pride and so, so honored to be, to be, to be here serving our city. And I sit on the Greater Kansas City Board, Chamber Board, same kind of comments I hear from business leaders all over the metro area, elected officials, business owners, corporate people. And all I can say is that it's because of all of you that are in this room and many other people that really do what we do because we care. There's so much talent. All of you guys are so intelligent, everyone here, staff, volunteer, council, board members. But it takes all of us doing it together, and I'm so proud of that. And anytime I represent our community outside of Lee Summit, I do it with a lot of honor and integrity. And I just want to share that with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, and congrats on becoming the vice chair today.
Second vice chair.
Second vice chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Sparks.
I agree with all the other statements that have been made. I just want to add this. While the city is here to govern the city, and while the board is here to govern the school district, one of these days, we're going to be in a grave somewhere. We're going to be dead, and it's going to be what we invest in the kids that are still in this city that's going to carry on the work. So I would like to remind us that while we may have different opinions, different positions, we have to make sure that we keep our kids at the focus of every decision that we make because we're going to be gone, and I want to leave this place better than the way that I got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you will, sir, you will. Yes, Councilmember Prior.
So I think I speak on behalf of almost every student in Lee Summit. Can you please call a snow day tomorrow?
I think Councilmember Prior offered to join me at 3:00 a.m., and Dr. Shelton, as we make that decision tomorrow morning.
Hey, the next part is the staff roundtable, so our two fearless leaders that do all the work, you get to finish the, the night. Dr. Buck.
It's an absolute honor to serve in our community and as a parent of three children, one elementary, one middle school, one high school. It's an absolute honor to be a parent here, and I see the benefits that our, our community offers to our children. So thank you for, everybody for making that possible.
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Dunning.
Even though I passed, real quick plug, Mayor, Character's, Character Breakfast Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m.
Right and early.
Well, since he's going to go out of order there, there, you do have a flyer at your spot, 100 People Care, February 8th. We have over 25 nonprofits signed up to come. If you're willing to come with a check to write $100 to it, if you have exactly 100 people, that's $10,000. One nonprofit will walk away with all, all the money, and then you'll learn about all the 25 nonprofits there. And then to throw it in, if you haven't seen East Trails, after it's over, I'll give you a tour. So it's February 8th at 7 o'clock at East Trails Middle School.
It's like a college, that place is.
It's amazing.
Hey, great job, everybody. And to all those here tonight, thank you for your support. Thank you for being here, and have a wonderful evening. We're going to adjourn this meeting at 10:06.